Oh, man. How's everybody?
Good.
When do we get to be in person?
Supposedly in June, right?
Don't you miss it? Oh, everybody nodded. Look at that.
I've never, I've never been there in person. It'll be a new experience for me.
You have not ever once, like, not even once?
Well, when we were sworn in.
I remember that. I have a-
That was it.
Screenshot of her.
And never again.
You know, I've gotten used to it because this is how we do everything now. I mean, I've, my, my firm has tried cases via Zoom, depositions are via Zoom, everything in my life is via Zoom these days, and you just kind of get used to the ease of not having to travel or go anywhere. So.
Yeah, no.
Kind of missed.
Everybody in my family is like, I'm not going back ever.
Oh, really?
Yeah. They're like, I'm doing virtual. I think I would hate that, but.
I never stopped being in person ever, I feel like. So I guess I just, this is just, it's like this and I do both. I don't know. I feel like I'd just rather go back.
We get to go in the building. My office is open, but you know, everything else is by Zoom, so.
All right.
Where's Susan? Where's Susan Newtonson?
She's such a slacker.
I don't see her. We'll get it rolling.
Steve?
Hopefully a couple others join us. But this is, are we on Dylan?
Yeah, we're recording.
Okay. This is Planning Board Public Meeting, Tuesday, May 18, 2021. It's approximately 7:36 PM right now. This is a virtual online public meeting. For the duration of the coronavirus health emergency, Village Hall is closed to the public, and meetings are held with participants at remote locations connecting to conferencing software provided by zoom.us. Members of the public are invited to view meetings live using the Zoom client, which also allows them to raise a hand and contribute with voice and video when they are invited to do so during public portions of the meeting. In accordance with the provisions of Section 10:4-18 of the Open Public Meetings Act, the date, location, and time of the commencement of this meeting is reflected in a meeting notice, a copy of which schedule has been filed with the village manager and village clerk, the Ridgewood News and the Record Newspapers, and posted on the bulletin board in the entry lobby of the village municipal offices at 131 North Maple Avenue on the village website, all in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Flag slip.
Second.
Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call Jane.
Mayor Newtonson?
She says she's waiting to get in.
She's coming in. I'm bringing her in.
Okay, I'll go back to her. Chief and Guard?
Here.
Councilwoman Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Joel?
Here.
Ms. O'Brien?
Here.
Ms. Petery? Ms. Huban?
Here.
Ms. Barto?
Here.
Ms. Westner?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
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 Mr. Lebarsky?
Here.
Mayor Newtonson?
I'm here. I could hear all of you, but I wasn't, for some reason, I was in the waiting room or something.
All right, welcome, everybody. We have a quorum and can proceed. Do we have any public comments on topics not pending before the board? So anyone in the gallery, if they want to ask, make a public comment, they can raise their hand. You'll be allowed in by the moderator, Dylan Hanson. You can state your name and address and then make your comment.
I am showing none.
Okay. Move on to next item. Do we have any updates from anybody on any committee commission or professional updates? Jane, do we have any correspondence received?
I had a couple emails about the hearing tonight, and I do believe I've seen those people here for the meeting. So, and then I had, I had one email regarding defense ordinance to the planning board. I did not send that on yet at this point, but I had to have it in the file.
Okay. All right, our number four agenda item will be Historic Preservation Commission Review. This is for Gong Cha 194 East Ridgewood Avenue, proposed sign. And the applicant is Alan Kim, and if Alan Kim can be allowed in?
I think. Sign mark was there. That should-
Yeah. Okay.
I don't know if Ms. Kim is here.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Can you turn on your video?
Sure, give me one second. I need to remove the tape. All right. Yes, can you guys see me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so I'll be attending in lieu of the tenant who is Alan Kim, and my name is Eric and I'm from Sign Mart, the sign contractor.
Okay.
Yes, so we're just proposing an illuminated sign for this business. All the dimensions and the specifications of the signs is the same as the tenant to the left. I believe it's Dior Fine Jewelry.
Okay, can you tell us about the substance of the sign? You know, what, what type of material and things like that?
Yeah, absolutely. The, so the main, the box that houses, you know, all the LEDs and all the components is made out of an old 40 aluminum. It'll be matte black. And the lettering is actually, the face of the aluminum is stenciled, so it's cut out, and from the back, we're putting a white acrylic face. So the black portion of the sign is opaque, which means there's no light coming through. So the only parts that will be illuminated are the letters Gong Cha and then the red emblem all the way to the right.
If anyone has questions, they can ask them.
What does the red emblem say?
Oh, that just says Gong Cha. I believe it is in Chinese. It's their company logo.
Eric, what was your last name, just so we have it?
Yes, my name, my last name is Lee, L-E.
Okay.
So I just, can I, I want to ask Marion, where's Marion?
Oh, there, yeah, I don't see Marion.
I don't see her on.
So do we allow illuminated signs like this? Is that even permissible?
Let me check the.
I thought it could be lit by lights, but not internal.
If the back is opaque and the letters are lit.
Right.
That's permitted.
Really?
Yes, if the, if the, the background is opaque and just the letters are illuminated, that is permitted. If you see, you know, Paula did sign off on this one.
All right. So, and where is Marion? Do we have her yet?
No, I'm gonna send an email to her. Any other questions from anybody?
unmute yourself and put the video on, let me know if you have a question.
Sorry about that, guys. I was listening, but I couldn't, I couldn't-
That's what I had. I couldn't-
She was under a different name. She was under Glenn Carter.
My, my husband logged in using, to a Zoom meeting, using this computer, so I was showing up as the, as the wrong person. Sorry about that. Yeah.
So Marion, my only question was whether or not those type of signs are permitted. For some reason, I didn't think they were, but I, I guess maybe it's possible. We just haven't seen one in a while.
Maybe. I didn't think they were either. I thought that the illuminated letters would not be permitted in the historic district.
I don't think that, that's what I'm asking. Can we check the code?
Yeah, yeah. It's a signage. If you want, if guys want to keep going, well, I'll look this up. I just need better light. One second.
I was just wondering, what is Gong Cha? Cha.
Oh, yeah, so it's a, it's a franchise that mainly is known for their bubble tea, so it's like a really popular drink these days, so. And this particular one, he's been opening in a lot of towns, and we've been doing all of their signs in Ridgewood now is wonderful.
What does the word itself mean?
I wish I knew. I think Cha means tea. I don't know what Gong means. Yeah. Yeah.
And Susan has the tail on the chi.
I know, right? It's funny. Yay, somebody finally did the tail. But I just, I, in my mind, I think that the sign that way is not permitted, so just wait for Marion to weigh in on that.
It translates into tribute tea for the emperor, according to Google.
You're very smart.
I mean, I speak only a little.
Just dabble?
Just when I have to.
Hey, Susan, Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
In the village approvals for permits for signs in the Village Center Historic District, the language says, please note that light may shine through letters and logo only.
Okay.
Background must be opaque.
Okay.
Well, this works, right? The background, the black, that covered up.
Okay, good. I'm glad I'm, I'm wrong, because I actually like this sign. What is that code? What is that under, Steve?
Approvals and permits for signs in the Village Center Historic District. I don't have the actual. This was revised March 2006. I can send it to you.
That's perfect. Let's, I guess, let's wait for Marion. Who's now apparently Glenn. I mean, I guess we could just say that we, if we're good with it, then just confirm as we get, when Marion comes back on that it's fine, she, I guess, since Steve already did that.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I don't know how everyone else feels. I think it's proportioned, it's simple, direct, and clean and neat.
I agree. Now I feel bad.
Did Igor, did Igor get removed from the meeting? I believe he's in the waiting line to come back in.
Yeah, he was there.
Yeah. Please connect me back to him.
Everybody's getting, having trouble tonight.
I thought I saw somebody disappear.
Okay, Igor's back. Should I call Marion and tell her we think we have it?
She can hear us, I think.
She said she can hear us.
Oh, okay, good.
Something I said?
At Harry Potter?
That's me calling her cell phone. Hi, they found the code.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. She's on her way.
Okay. Now maybe we're feeling worse.
Sorry about that, guys. Yeah. So it talks about diffused lighting, and, and it's not exactly as clear as it should be. But there are options for lighting. And the way it's worded is very unusual. Illumination of any sign shall be of the diffused lighting type, and only the letters or logo in the sign shall be illuminated. No sign shall be lighted by means of flashing or intermittent illumination, and neon signs or neon, and LED, and similar signs with light sources or illumination devices that are visible are prohibited. Indirectly lighted signs, they are permitted. So it really, and then, then, and then is, then the other issue is whether or not it's, be recommended with, out of, out of those types of signs that are permitted, whether they would be recommended by the historic commission within that district. And typically, you see halo signs permitted, and you see indirectly illuminated signs permitted in historic districts, unless there's some new and unusual type of diffused lighting source that maybe the applicant could describe, which makes it different. That makes it maybe fit in with this, you know, with the area, but that's something to think about.
Marion, did you, I'm sorry. Did you hear what Steve had to say about his findings on this subject matter? Because it seems like it's allowed.
Yeah, it seems like it's allowed. It's, it's, and it's as far as an application for the, the use itself and the, and the, and the design itself. But in the historic district, you have definitely have, you have some leeway too on your recommendations, but other than that, it is allowed. It's called diffuse signage. If the applicant can describe how the lights are in the lettering, and it's only the lettering that would be able to be lit from behind. So a box sign wouldn't be permitted.
I mean, this is right next, isn't this, this is right next to the movie theater? Right? With the lid up. I mean, the sign there is lit. I, are, Marion, were you saying we have some leeway to go to say, well, the neighboring buildings also, or there's some other-
Yeah, you have some leeway. I think so.
I just wanted to ask a quick question. What color is the lighting? What color will the letters be when lit? Or is it a yellow light or is it a white light?
Yeah, so the LEDs on the inside are all white, so which means the letters Gong Cha will be white. Now, the only part that will have color is the logo, which in itself is red, and it's, it shines as red because we put a red translucent vinyl on the white acrylic face. So to answer your question, the light itself will be white, the letters will be white, the logo will be red background with the white characters inside.
What, what, one of the things that I'm going to ask this question of the applicant, one of the things in the illuminated sections for directly illuminated signs, it reads specifically, it says neon signs, when the neon tube is visible, as well as LED lighting emitted, emitting diode signs and similar signs, when the light source or the illumination device are visible are prohibited. So if this is LED and, and the light emitting diode is visible, then that would make it non-conforming. So if you could address that detail of the signage?
Yeah, so as you say, we do use the LED modules that are inside the panel, but we make it so that the distance between where the modules are and the face is enough so that all you see is just the lighting and not the individual modules that we are using.
Okay, so you don't see the source?
Oh, no, absolutely not.
I'm good. And in the meantime, I looked up the menu. It looks really good.
Is there, you said you did these signs somewhere else. I mean, is there, you did them in another town close by or nearby that we could just take a look? I mean, that's all fine, but-
Oh, um, yeah, we did. This is our, this is our fifth location, so we started in Fort Lee and then in Closter and then in Melbourne.
Are any of the ones you did in any of those locations the same as this sign? So.
This one, this type of sign, I'm trying to think. Well, we did a similar one in Closter. We did, we also did a lightbox sign, LED lightbox sign, but instead of the background being aluminum, we just used black vinyl instead to make it opaque, because their sign was very large. But the outcome pretty much is the same, because the background will be opaque and only the letters and the logo-
From what I can see, that's, it's lit, the, the one in Closter, if you Google it, there's an image, and it's very subdued lighting, very-
Yeah, yeah. It's, there's nothing that's too, you know.
All right.
Yeah, too visibly offensive. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right, so I guess give a favorable recommendation on this. All right. Thank you, Eric. We'll be sending a letter.
All right, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Jane, can you prep a letter?
I will, yes.
Okay, thanks. Okay, the next item on the agenda will be Tascow Enterprises LLC, 315 East Glen Avenue, block 3106. Lots 20.01 and 20.02. Application for amended major subdivision approval related variances and proposed easement. This was carried from May 4, 2021 without further notice and without prejudice to the board, and the attorney of record on this is David Rutherford.
Just waiting for David to come in. There he is. David, are you there? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Good evening, everyone.
Hey, how are you, David?
Good, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so this is your application, so you can give an intro if you'd like.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to do that. I'd like to have, I see Mr. Latincich, I believe, is here, and Mr. Tascow should be here as well. And I see Candace, our court reporter, is here also. Okay, good. Mr. Hanson, do you see Mr. Tascow?
I do not.
Okay, well, we'll proceed. He'll catch up, I'm sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is David L. Rutherford. I'm an attorney with offices here in Ridgewood. My appearance tonight is on behalf of Tascow Enterprises LLC. It relates to the property at 350 East Glen Avenue, lots 20.01 and 20.02 in block 3106. I just have a very brief opening statement, and then we're prepared, I think, with some fairly brief testimony from Mr. Latincich as well, given the nature of this matter. The subdivision of former lot 20 in block 3106 was approved by the planning board on April 3, 2018, and memorialized in a resolution adopted on July 3, 2018. With Mr. Wellinghorse, with your permission, I'd like to mark that as exhibit A1.
Noted A1, thank you.
Thank you. And the subdivision created proposed lots 20.01 and 20.02. And that subdivision resolution was based upon a one-page major subdivision plan. It was dated October 10, 2016, last revised on January 25, 2018, which I would like to mark as exhibit A2.
Very well.
And the subdivision was perfected with the filing of a subdivision map as filed map number 9714, filed in the Burton County Clerk's Office on July 19, 2019, which we could mark as exhibit A3.
Yes.
And all, thank you. All of the three exhibits I just referred to, and the two exhibits that I'm about to refer to in a moment, have been filed with this application and were posted on the village website. The approved subdivision plan showed a conceptual dwelling on lot 20.02, that's the interior lot, and called for the utilities serving that lot to run within an existing easement and underneath an existing access driveway, that easement being 25 feet in width on the east side of the property. And the approved subdivision plan also showed the existing dwelling on lot 20.01 to remain. Mr. Tascow is not the applicant. He has recently acquired the property, and he wishes to change the configuration of the conceptual home shown on lot 20.02, primarily to create a side loading as opposed to a front loading garage and to include a swimming pool. Mr. Tascow, with Mr. Latincich's assistance and advice, has also determined to establish a dedicated easement across lot 20.01, serving lot 20.02 exclusively for the purpose of providing needed utility service, so as to avoid disturbance of the existing utility lines underneath the access driveway. Finally, further inspection of the home on lot 20.01 has disclosed that it is in poor condition, is not a suitable candidate for renovation, and must be demolished. A new home with a swimming pool conforming with all bulk requirements of the zoning ordinance will be built on lot 20.01. I should note that, and I'll address Ms. Bucci Carter's report in a moment, with respect to her need for additional variances. Putting that issue aside, and I'll address that in a moment, both homes that we propose will be built without variance of any sort from the zoning ordinance to the village of Bridgewood. What brings us here this evening is that village representatives have determined that these changes required Mr. Tascow to return to the board for a revised approval, and I did have correspondence and discussion with your former attorney, Mr. Martin, with respect to that back in February and March of this year. So that's what brings us here this evening. This Mr. Tascow's position that these changes have no effect on the original proposal and, and, and approval. The proposed home on lot 20.02 was conceptual only. I'm told that this was a subject of considerable discourse during the hearings, and a note was included on the plan to that effect. The resolution of approval did limit the size of the home on lot 20.02 to 3,664 square feet, and the plot plan that you have in front of you for lot 20.02 does indeed comply with that. It's our position that the change to a side loading garage in addition to the pool have no impact upon the subdivision. Mr. Latincich will also testify that the dedicated utility easement is an improvement over what was shown on the approved plan, as it will not provide any sort of disturbance to existing utility lines under the existing driveway. Finally, the existing home on lot 20.01 is of no special architectural or historical significance. Its preservation was not a condition of the approval, and its removal is not relevant to the initial approval. I would note that the initial application, as well as what brings us here this evening, is for a subdivision. is for a subdivision, not site plan. And specifically, section 40, colon, 55D-37 in municipal land use law specifically exempts from the need to require site plan approval the construction of single and two-family homes. So it's our position essentially with respect to those three items, which is what brought us here, that the changes are inconsequential, have no effect on the prior approval. I will also say that the approval remains in effect. Mr. Tascow has rights with respect to that approval. The subdivision has been perfected. And as far as I know, we have complied with all of the conditions of the prior approval. When I filed the application, Ms. Bucci Carter prepared a report. It's dated March 31, March 31, 2021. It consists of four pages. And just for the purpose of my introductory statement, I wanted to address the comments on page three of the application. It's her opinion that variances are needed from section 190-119A1A, which talks about lots fronting on streets that are burdened by easements. And in general terms, it says that setbacks should be measured from the edge of the easement rather than the edge of the right-of-way. And I have three comments with respect to the need for those variances. First of all, it's our opinion that they are not needed and that the board cannot properly require my client to apply for them and the reasons for that are as follows. Number one, there is a legal doctrine known as the law of the case. And what that stands for essentially is that when an issue has been considered and adjudicated and decided, that essentially controls for the balance of that particular matter. So in this case, the resolution of approval dating to 2018 did not require variances for setbacks from the 25-foot-wide driveway easement running along the east side of the property. It did address that section with respect to the front yard setback for the existing home on lot 20.01. Part of the county requirements to get the approval for this subdivision was the dedication of a five-foot-wide road widening easement on East Glen Avenue. And if you look at the resolution, you'll see that the board did indeed consider that and did indeed grant a variance for that home to remain there because essentially the lot line moved in five feet if you, if you consider the easement. I should note that the new plan for the new home on lot 20.01, this is a collateral comment, is set back much further than what the existing home is and more than complies with the setback even when you take the easement into account. So we have the law of the case. The second issue is that the issue was clearly not ignored or overlooked by the board. It was dealt with explicitly with respect to the road widening easement. And the third position that we would take on that as to why that easement is not required is that section 90-119A1, where it talks about setbacks being measured from the edge of the easement rather than the right-of-way, talks about streets. It specifically says all front yards must face upon a dedicated public street. And the sentence that's cited in your plan is reported, it says, "In the event a street or part thereof is located within an easement, a street." And a street is a very specifically defined term in the ordinance. And it talks about an existing state, county, or municipal roadway. What we have here, and admittedly, this is a very unusual piece of property. There's no question about that. But what here we have is that the 25-foot driveway easement running along the east side of the property is not a street. It is a private right-of-way. It's used for access to lot 20.01 as well as three other homes, I believe, in the rear of the property. And it is, does not, is certainly not improved in accordance with Village specifications. And Mr. Rutherford's memo dated May 18, 2021, which I had an opportunity to review before this hearing, says that the proposed common private driveway does not meet residential site improvement standards. The Village of Ridgewood will not accept it as a municipal roadway and as such shall provide no services for it. So it's the private driveway and therefore we do not believe that the setbacks for the proposed new homes on 2001 and 2002 should be measured from the edge of that easement, rather they should be measured from the easterly property line. In a moment, Mr. Latincich will comment on this. He told me earlier when I spoke with him to prepare for this meeting that the setbacks of the homes, the setback of the new home specifically on 20.02 was the subject of some discussion. And he'll talk briefly about how that setback was calculated. So it's our position that, and I appreciate and respect, please understand, is Bucci Carter's report. But we don't believe that those variances were required the first time around. They can't be required now. And furthermore, there's a good reason why they're not required because the easement is not a street. We don't think that provision of the ordinance applies in this particular case. The board certainly found that it applied to the property on East Glen Avenue, but not along the, not along the 25-foot driveway easement. So what I'd like to do this evening is I'm going to try to offer some very brief or relatively brief testimony from Mr. Latincich with respect to the issues I have just addressed. I do have a few questions for him with respect to Ms. Bucci Carter's report as well as Mr. Rutherford's report dated May 18. And then I would, an email was shared with me earlier today with respect to some questions that a member of the public had. And I, members of the public certainly will be able to speak for themselves, but there were two or three questions there that I think that we can answer fairly quickly and hopefully that will help as well. So we're really here, in summary, for all that I've said, for some very minor changes to the plan. They are admittedly changes, but they are minor. We don't think they go to the merits of the subdivision in which Mr. Tascow has vested rights anyway. And that an amended approval could be granted to address the three issues, namely the demolition of the house on 01, the new dedicated utility easement to 2002. And the third one being the change in the conceptual dwelling or the configuration of the proposed new home on 2022. We also did file and there had been posted on the Village website. This was requested by Ms. Bucci Carter. We were happy to do it. Plans for the homes and elevations. One of the questions from interest, an interested party was the height. I indicated earlier, Mr. Latincich will confirm in a moment that these homes will more than comply with all the bulk requirements, the ordinance. I should note also that the minimum lot size in this zone is 10,500 square feet. And these lots are way, way, much, much, much larger than that. So there's, there's a lot of space here. And even with the easements, even if the board were to, to, I don't say disregard, but to take that way the area of the driveway easement, these lots still more than comply. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I said I was going to be brief. I wasn't so brief. But with that, I'd like to have Mr. Latincich sworn and we'll offer some brief testimony from him about those various items, if you please.
Alright, sure. Steve, do you want to swear, man?
Yes, Mr. Is Mr. Latincich on?
Yes.
Would you, okay, raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, Tibor Latincich, spelled T-I-B-O-R-L-A-T-I-N-C-S-I-C-S. Principal engineer with the firm of Conklin Associates. Business address 29 Church Street, Ramsey, New Jersey. PE license number 32444. Professional planner license number 3736. And I've appeared before the board, certainly on this application and other applications in the past.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Wellinghorst. Mr. Latincich, we're going to try to address, essentially, there are five areas of testimony I want to cover here. One is the utility easement. One is the new lot on 2002. The third is the demolition lot on 2001. The fourth is the potential need for variances or setback variances for those new homes based upon the easement along the east. And then five, we'll talk a little bit about the planners and village planner and village engineers report. So first, with respect to the dedicated easement, it's accurate, as I said in my opening statement, that the utilities for the new home on proposed lot 20.02 were originally envisioned to be placed within the 25-foot-wide driveway easement along the east side of the property. Is that correct?
Correct. And if I could be allowed to share the screen? I
You're good to go.
Okay.
While you're, while you're doing that, my follow-up question is that we should just confirm that there are already utilities in that easement that serve the properties further to the east. I'm sorry, further to the north, to the rear of lots 2001 and 2002, correct?
Correct. And am I sharing the screen? Is, have we seen the original major subdivision plan on their screen?
No. Yet.
Okay, not yet. Okay. There's an extra. Please bear with me here. It's on my screen, but not yours. About now?
Yes.
Okay. I have on the, I have on the screen the the approved major subdivision plot, lot 20, block 3106 for Linda Sue Calby. Last revised 1/25/19. This was the specific plan approved by the board for the preliminary major subdivision. It shows the two subject lots, 20.01 and 20.02. And the common driveway, which provides access and utilities to the three homes to the rear, which are located on two lots. Those three homes have a 25-foot-wide access easement. And within that is a six-foot utility easement for the water, sewer, and gas lines servicing these homes to the rear. Electric is overhead. So this is just to refresh the board's memory on the original preliminary approved subdivision. And I'll point out specifically, there was extensive discussion during the hearings that the footprint of the home shown on 20.02 was representative. In fact, if we go to note number five on the plan, a very specific note in that regard. Which states, "Proposed home on lot 20.02 is conceptual, shown for illustrative purposes only. House orientation and footprint is representative and subject to change." There, as Mr. Rutherford stated, there was an approval condition that said home could not exceed 3,664 square feet.
And the home, the home that we're proposing on 2002 does not exceed, complies with that, the 3,664, correct?
Correct. Three, and it is, to be specific, 3,559 square feet, including the garage.
Okay. And to be clear, we are not proposing, the original plan did not propose to disturb the utilities serving the lots to the north. And we do not propose that now. Is that correct?
Correct.
And what we are proposing now is a dedicated utility easement along, across 20.01 for the benefit of 20.02. And we didn't mark that yet, Mr. Latincich, but maybe you could pull up the plot plan, please, for 20.02 that also shows the easement, I believe, on lot 20.01. And Mr. Wellinghorst, with your permission, we'll mark that as A4. And this is a plot and soil erosion control plan for lot 20.02. It's dated October 10, 2016, last revised February 19, 2021. And Mr. Latincich, is that what you have on the, that's what you have up now?
Yes, and this is a specific plot plan for lot 20.02, which is a 17,029-square-foot lot in the R2 zone, which requires 10,500 square feet. It is significantly oversized. If we exclude the 25-foot-wide access easement of the area, the lot is 14,000, remaining area is 14,154 square feet, well in excess of the 10,500. Indicated, indicated is the proposed home, which is 3,559 square feet. The big change being previously there was a front-loading garage. We now propose a side-loading garage, which we believe is preferable for a number of reasons. Typically, people prefer a side-loading for aesthetic purposes. It does provide more, if you want, off-common driveway parking area and more place to push snow. In regards to the easement, and this plan was also a demolition plan for the existing home on lot 20.01. That home is a non-conforming location, is that is over the setback line. And as stated earlier, it is in a state of disrepair. Decision has been made to demolish it. Along with that would be the demolition of the detached garage. That allowed the creation of a utility easement parallel to the common driveway to service the proposed new home on 20.02. The benefits of this proposed utility easement is that there is no disruption to the common driveway. And if you may recall, that common driveway was actually repaved by the gas company during the period of the last hearings. The driveway is in good shape. I would comment, it was substantially repaved. The gas company did not skimp on the thickness of that pavement. So that's about two years ago now. The driveway is in good shape. I'm tracing the utilities of the existing homes in the back with my cursor. You see there's a gas line. There's a water line and there's a sewer line. They basically go down the center of the driveway. And then, and the question begs, why disturb the driveway when we can create an independent utility easement parallel to it across lot 20.01 in favor of 20.02? And as I always advise my clients, when you bury a utility, always assume you will have to dig it up for some reason. On, so, and typically there's disturbance and disruption of other utilities. So it's best to separate these utilities if we can. And then opportunity presents itself with the demolition of the detached garage. And this is, it's to the benefit of the home on 20.02. And similarly, to the benefit of the three homes to the rear. Because if they need to dig up their utilities, they don't have to worry about disturbing the new utilities. I will point out that it was a condition of the planning board that a conduit be installed to benefit the homes in the rear in case they ever had an issue with a water line. And that is specified on the plans that a conduit would be installed for the benefit of the rear properties. So, but going back to this, is it 10-foot-wide utility easement across 20.01 solely for the purpose of and benefit of 20.02? The plan, the village planner did make a comment, perhaps that should be extended to benefit the homes in the rear. That would defeat the purpose of separating the utilities. I think it's a much better plan that the utilities for the new home on 20.02 be in its own and independent easement. And the existing utilities within the 25-foot-wide access driveway within a six-foot easement of its own remain independent.
So those are two of the changes, the change in the, in the configuration, if you will, of the conceptual dwelling on 02 and the dedicated utility easement. We'll get to 01 in a moment. But just to go back to 02, that complies with all of the bulk requirements of the ordinance. Is that right?
Correct.
And you heard my opening statement where I indicated that the impact And you heard my opening statement where I indicated that the impact of section 190-119, let's see, A1, I believe, I'm sorry, yeah, A1A, A1A, was indeed an issue before the board in the initial approval with respect to the setback of the existing home from East Glen Avenue, correct?
Yes, and
That was not, that was not applied with respect to setbacks from the easement, the 25-foot access easement. That was, that was not applied, and we don't have to go through all that again. In my opening statement, I, I suggested a reason why, namely that the 25-foot driveway, wide drive, 25-foot-wide driveway easement is not a street, as, as contemplated in the ordinance for the application of that section. What did the original plan, the original 22, 20.02 conceptual home, what did that, that show for a setback from the easterly lot line to the house?
Right, and this was specifically discussed during the public hearings. And originally, the home had a 50-foot setback to the easterly property line. That was amended at the, at the direction and dialogue with the board to 55 feet, which is indicated on the approved major preliminary subdivision plot. Subsequently, the, the map was filed, and I would like to rotate this somewhere.
You're referring, for the record, while you, while you rotate it, you're referring for the record to filed map number 9714, correct?
Yes, this is the filed map, it's signed by the municipality, and actually, it'd be easy to read if I don't rotate it. It actually calls out on lot 20.02 on the filed map, we identify a 30-foot accepted front yard setback. That's indicated on the filed map, we indicate the building envelope that 30-foot accepted front yard setback is 30 feet from the easement line and 55 feet from the easterly property line, which I am tracing. So this was, this was very specifically discussed and accommodated for at every level. If I go to the current plot plan.
Now you're back to A4, this is the plot plan for 20?
Excuse me, wrong plan.
Yeah, right, 2002, we want, please.
Yes, please bear with me here. I may have lost, may have lost display here, please bear with me. Okay, yes, the, if we go to the plot, have we seen the plan on the screen?
Yeah, this is A4, just for the record, this is exhibit A4. It's the plot plan for lot 20.02. And I guess the question is, you have indeed maintained that 55-foot setback, correct? And, and as a further point, the improvements, et cetera, for the home, et cetera, all fall within the building line, the principal building line envelope that was outlined on the plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And while we're focusing on this plot plan for 20.02, which again is a 17,000-square-foot lot in the 10,500 zone, the roof height is 28.3 feet, where 30 feet is permitted in the zone. In terms of soil movement, there would be 651 cubic yards of soil movement, primarily associated with the excavation for the foundation and the pool. And we propose that soil would be exported to lot 20.01 when that home is demolished to fill in this foundation. So excess soil from this lot would be exported directly next door to backfill this foundation and grade the property subsequent to demolition.
And, and you also, while, while you're on that 2002, we'll stay there. The questions that I were, was provided with earlier today from an interested party had what, had to know with, had to do with the square foot of the, the home, or the width and the height. You've already addressed the height. What, not forgetting the building area for the moment, what is the area of the home? You know, the, the footprint of the home, if you will.
Yeah, bear with me for a moment. The footprint of the home is 2,182 square feet with a width excluding the chimney of by scale, 64 to 65 feet, with a roof height of 28.3, what is zoning ordinance allows for 30 feet.
And we're well under, I'm not going to go through the whole zoning table, but in terms of coverage by improvements and all that stuff, we are well under what's permitted for that home, correct?
Correct.
So it's consistent, not only with the zoning ordinance, but it is also very consistent with the prior approval, albeit with a different configuration.
Yes, and I will comment that the plot plan also shows buffer landscaping. The approval specified 18 replacement trees. Mr. Pascoe proposes 35 replacement trees throughout two lots. And we anticipate these would be conifers for the year-round screening and buffering that they provide, as indicated on the plan. I'm tracing a conifer row to the benefit of the neighbors to the north. And needless to say, a conifer row between the two new homes, I'm tracing on the middle lot line.
Okay. All right, let's go to the plot plan for lot 20.01 then, please. Now here again, a general question. This lot complies with the lot, with the lot lines or building envelope that was shown on the approved subdivision plan and the filed map, correct?
Correct.
And you testified earlier that, when, actually, I'll backing up just a moment, the original resolution granted a resolution, granted a variance for the front yard setback of that home, correct?
Correct.
That had, that was created not because the home was moving, but because the front lot line bumped in five feet due to the road widening easement. I think the proposed setback from the edge of the easement was 37.9 and 42.9 from the edge of the right-of-way. What's the setback for this home now from the edge of the Glen Avenue right-of-way?
A significant improvement over the existing non-conforming home. The setback to the East Glen Avenue right-of-way is 59.7 feet. If we exclude the road widening easement, it is 50, obviously, 54.7 feet, a significant improvement over existing conditions.
Where 40, and where 45, or 40 feet, I should say, is required, correct?
Yes.
Same general question, this more than complies with all of the provisions for coverage by above-grade structures, gross building area, coverage by improvements, et cetera.
Correct.
What are the dimensions of this house? And I'm, by the dimensions, I mean outside, I realize there are different bump outs and et cetera, you know, maybe just give us the rough outside dimensions, please, and its height also.
The the width of the home is approximately 68 feet. Would it take up typical depth of 32 feet? The roof height is 29.8 feet, where 30 feet is permitted. The livable area, including the garages, is 3,926 feet, 26 square feet, 3,926 square feet. Again, this is a significantly oversized lot for the R2 zone. It is a 24,975-square-foot lot in the 10,500-square-foot zone. If we exclude the access easement, it is 20,825 square feet. If we exclude the county easement, it is 20,075 square feet, or still almost double the requirement.
And it also maintains the same 55-foot setback from the east property line and the same 30-foot setback from the edge of the 25-foot common driveway. Same methodology, same reasoning as you testified to just a moment ago, correct?
Correct, and to, and to refresh the board's memory, a condition of approval was the planting of some green, giant green arborvitae along the easterly sideline to benefit the home to the east. That is indicated on the plot plan, as well as additional conifer screenings along the frontage of the property to screen East Glen Avenue.
Dave, did you mark this as an exhibit?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes, that should be exhibit A5, thank you. We hadn't marked that, so we have five exhibits, the resolution, the original subdivision plan, filed map 9714, and then the plot plans for lots 20.01 and 20.02. I'm not, I don't intend at this point, Mr. Chairman, to go into any detail to the architectural plans. We, they were requested and we were pleased to provide them. I think Mr. Litincic has, has, has covered that adequately at this point. Mr. Litincic, just a few questions about, we're going to go quickly through Ms. Bucci Carter's report dated March 31st, and then Mr. Rutherford's report dated May 18th. Ms. Bucci Carter asked for elevation plans to assess height and to evaluate variances, you have, you have, we've provided that. You have addressed the lot area for both lots, with and without the road widening easement with respect to O1 along East Glen Avenue. And even though it's our position legally, to be very clear, that the area of the access easement is not to be considered, even if the board were to take a look at that and, and kind of back that area out, the lots more than comply with the minimum lot area requirements, even if that were to take place. Ms. Bucci Carter had just a couple of minor changes on the plot plan for the revision date, or plot plan for 2002, an accurate revision date, and a side yard setback for 2002 should be 25, 25 feet, not two and a half feet, that's fine. She noted that the 10-foot utility easement should be labeled as in favor of lot 20.02, which I'm sure we can do, and you have already addressed her a suggestion that perhaps the utility easement be, include lots 49 and 50 as well, and you've explained that as well, we're trying to, to avoid disturbing existing utilities. This easement is solely for new utilities to the new home on 2002. Continue all conditions of the prior approval. I know, Mr. Litincic, we can stipulate that the board, or the applicant, I should say, understands that it is bound by all of the conditions of the resolution previously adopted by the board, and she refers to grading drainage and utility issues are deferred to the village engineer. So then, turning to Mr. Rutherford's report dated May 18th, I just, I, I think there's just a very few questions on this. I don't think in, in general terms, I'm not sure there's anything here that's an issue. But we will go through them very quickly. And I think the, there's, I don't know if you think there's any comments here, I, I think.
I would just add one thing, for just to have a complete record. I discussed soil movement on lot 20.01. Excuse me, on 20.02, a gross soil movement, 651 cubic yards. Much would be used to fill in this foundation. On lot 20.01, gross soil movement of 899 cubic yards, with an export of 773 cubic yards. Certainly less than the 2,000 cubic yards for a major soil movement permit.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, and thank you for that, yes, that is item, soil movement on the second page of Mr. Rutherford's report. He, I, I mentioned earlier the fact that the private driveway does not meet RSIS standards, and that village will not accept it as a municipal roadway and provide no services with respect to it. We understand, and Mr. Tascoe, certainly, Mr. Litincic understands that compliance with the Village of Ridgewood stormwater management requirements will be required. You've addressed the need for a major soil-moving permit, basically by saying one is not required. We understand that there will be a connection fee to the village for 20.02. And, yeah, do you see anything else there that's of concern to you that we cannot comply with, have not, or cannot, or will not comply with? In Mr. Rutherford's memo.
No problem in compliance.
Okay.
We will comply.
All right, and I think, I think we've also addressed the questions from the interested party, you've addressed the, the size and width and height of both of the new homes. One of the questions was, and we'll, we'll just, and again, in the interest of completeness, I'll ask it to you. You're not able to, we only saw these questions today, but, but even putting that aside, you're not really prepared tonight to comment how the proposed height will compare to the houses that surround the property. You have a general knowledge, but you haven't done any analysis of those heights that would permit you to answer that question with any degree of accuracy or specificity, is that correct?
Correct, I have not measured the roof heights of adjoining properties, but simply put, the proposed home roof heights comply with the 30-foot limitation of the zoning code.
Okay, and both will, and we've made it clear. Anything else, Mr. Litincic, that you feel needs to be added at this point?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, that's all I'd have for Mr. Litincic right now, thank you.
Okay, the board has an opportunity to cross-examine T-Bore, so whoever wants to ask questions can ask away.
I have a question about the driveway. Right now, it's only, it's less than 20 feet wide. You, you were going to make it 20 feet wide, that was part of the
Yes, let me just check the approved plan, this was discussed at length. And I'm looking for, yes, the, the new drive or the reconstructed driveway will be 20 feet wide. I'm tracing the irregular nature of the current driveway, and it will be the reconstructed driveway up to the second home will be 20 feet wide.
So you're still going to have to rip out the old driveway?
No, we're gonna, no, it's just a substantial pavement box. We will probably saw cut a neat, a neat edge and, and then add new pavement. Existing driveway is in good shape.
So, I guess I have a couple of questions. Were you okay, Jim?
Yeah, that's all I have for right now.
Okay. So I just, you know, throughout the original application, it was a clear representation that the Stucco house would remain.
That is, that is incorrect. Mr. Di Delia, who is the attorney, made it very specific that the plans for the home up front were unknown at the time.
I believe the applicant made a representation that the home would remain, that they were going to preserve and restore the home. I think that's in the resolution. I, if somebody, maybe, oh, can I also just real quick ask Chris, where's Chris Rutherford? Oh, there you are, Chris, Chris, for some reason, when I pulled your report up on my, my screen, the second page is all blacked out, I don't know, it wasn't blacked out the other day, but I just want to know if you could just email a new one to me, if you don't mind. I don't know why it happened, it's just kind of a weird thing.
All right, if I send it to you tomorrow morning?
Yeah, that's fine. So I, I, I believe in the original resolution, and so, so we're going to
Susan, go to the resolution, page 5. Go to the resolution, page five, paragraph four, maybe.
Mr. Joel, I'm sorry, what, my pages of that resolution are not numbered. What?
Yeah, it's not numbered. That would be five, if you could take the one, two, three, four, fifth page. And it would be paragraph four. Starting with lot twenty currently contains the two and a half.
I see, yeah, I understand. I see what you're saying. Yes, thank you.
And it says, existing residents will remain on proposed lot twenty point zero one.
Okay, so am I, so I'm correct? Is that, is that what you're saying, Mr. Chairman?
From what I see on the resolution.
The demolition of that house already begun, though, if I'm not mistaken?
Just hang on a minute. I just, sorry, Melanie, just. So throughout this entire process, back a couple of years ago. The representation was unequivocally that the that house was going to remain. And I'm concerned that this application just said dormant. And the house was either, I mean, if if the representation was the house was going to remain and and. That it could be preserved, it could be restored. I'm concerned as to why that wouldn't be continuing, since that was clearly. The the, a very big focus. Of those hearings, it was a concern of the neighbors. There was. An incredible amount of information that was brought forward by by some of the residents about the historic area, the space. The the aesthetics of that house. So why is it suddenly that house can't stay? And then my next question is, it was represented to us back then, and I haven't looked for that in the resolution that's on my screen now. You know, at the, at the time, the representation was that. I guess a a variance wasn't required, and yet now we're hearing from our. Planner that a variance is required for that setback. And what's interesting is when I look at this plan, and I I'd like someone to speak to this. When I look at the plan, I always agree that the there should have been a greater setback, because what we have is a house. That's pushed in front of the other houses now with a pool. So the front house of the the front door. Of the house to the side of this construction is going to come out their front door and see this pool. And the folks on, I guess it's Sterling, is that Sterling? That's on, okay, so that that lack of a setback is creating a situation where headlights and and. It's just a bulk issue, and there's headlights going into the the neighbor's rear yard. So there's a lot going on there. So I would like to have some clarification about the variance, because I agree, it should have always had a variance on that setback. But so those are my questions. Why is it suddenly this house can't remain?
To piggyback onto that, I, am I incorrect, or am I correct that the house has already begun to be? Taken demolished?
I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Litinich can answer that question. If not, we'll have to have Mr. Tasco answer it.
Okay, well, there is, there is a piece of excavating equipment parked in front of the home on the driveway. I believe utilities have been cut off, water service and such. But there, to my knowledge, there's been no actual physical demolition of the home. There's been preparation, there's been tree removal, but no actual demolition. In regards to the mayor's question, in terms of the setback of this, this is the home to the east. I believe it's Mr. Montieth, I'm pronouncing his name. Excuse me. Here is his front porch. We are substantially beyond that. And as to your concern about headlights, if you're familiar, there is, there's that rather unattractive. Concrete block wall, which they have requested to be removed and and part of the overall plan. That was specific request. And specifically, there's a row of arborvitae specified for headlight concerns. To the neighbor. So I I believe if that's what the mayor was referring to. We actually, the proposed home, the existing home is over the front setback line. The new home is in conformance with Ridgewood zoning.
Right, well, I'm talking about the setback, and T-Bore, what I was talking about is if you look at that. If you continue traveling up with your, I always try to use my own mouse when carrying the screen is kind of a funny thing. So you'll see the, is it on there? I believe it's on there. You'll see, continue up, there's a little house. There's a smaller house, right?
You're talking about further up on Sterling.
No, 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 I'm talking about further up on the easement on the right away.
Beyond twenty point oh two.
Oh, got you, behind there.
Let me pull up the original major subdivision plan, which has probably a better.
Actually, it's actually kind of nice to see it on here, because when I'm looking at it, I'm going to pull that sheet up on my screen.
Okay, this is the original subdivision plan. This is the.
You see frame dwelling number three one seven, I guess that's the address, that's three one seven. So those folks, when they come out of their.
This is the Cape Cod home, yes, right here.
Yeah.
Here.
Uh huh, yeah. So their front door is aligned now essentially with this swimming pool. And I I believe that the reason that the setback should be enforced. Is to at least make that the new house more conforming to the streetscape, albeit it's it's kind of an. Unusual location.
Lot forty nine is a non-conforming lot. Is it non-conforming lot with a home in a non-conforming location? Let me repeat that. Lot forty nine is a non-conforming lot.
But it's a pre-existing, it's pre-existing, T-Bore. So what I'm saying, and and now we're not talking about the pre-existing conditions of. Number three seventeen, I'm just talking about the 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 environment, the the conditions of the environment, and whether or not. The setback. That is a result, the fifty foot setback should be enforced, because what we have is a fifty foot rear yard. But but a disruption to the entire area based on a desire to have a huge house. And a pool and a whole bunch of other amenities, but at the, I guess, sacrificing. What really should include that setback, that variance relief.
We also now, let me just clarify, I'm asked, I guess I'm asking, so now we're looking at where two houses were supposed to be. Because we had the front house staying as part of our resolution, and there was to be the second back house. Now we're going to have one just sort of enormous. I understand it, it's not going to take both lots.
No, Melanie, it's two houses, two houses with pools, right? They both have pools. Is that correct, T-Bore?
Yes.
Okay, so they both have pools, and then just just so I also, you gotta go back and look a little because.
So much information, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I think that the way, it would have probably been helpful to have a plan that showed. The outcome, and I don't, I don't see it. For some reason, I thought I did see it, but I don't see it now. It's a lot of documents and it all split up. It was there a full. Plan that showed both houses, then both new houses side by side with the two pools. Did you have that, T-Bore?
Uh, no, we do not.
That's why I'm confused, I'm sorry.
Well, I think the way this is presented is incredibly confusing for board members. Because it's hard, we we're showing on all of these plans, the Stucco house. And we're not really getting the full impact of. How this is going to lay out with two pools and two huge homes and and. And especially given that there was a representation, a clear representation that the Stucco house was staying, so I'll, I'm. I I let, if somebody else has questions, I guess.
Um, I have a question about the proposed easement. Where that is, aren't there a lot of trees along that row?
Those trees have been cut down.
They've already been cut.
Yes. And then circling back to a question of the of the mayor and the town planner. This is the definition of a street in the village of Ridgewood. Any street avenue, boulevard, road, parkway, viaduct, alley, or other way. Which is an existing state, county, or municipal roadway. This is a common driveway, not a street, and I believe that is somewhat reinforced. Mr. Ruda Hauser's report, where he states that is. Town is not going to, excuse me, the village is not going to accept this common driveway. It is a common driveway, not a street. Again, I'm gonna read the definition. Any street avenue, boulevard, viaduct alley, which is an existing state, county, mini. State, county, or municipal roadway. This is not that. So the. We believe the setback should be measured from the property line as per the original approval.
Is this the same, this is the same, not a street? That that I think we had wanted to name and to make a street, or or had been your request, or the request of the applicant originally? Hidden Glen Road, wasn't it, that was requested? Not a street, but I mean, I guess since we didn't make it a street. I'm not sure that was even up to us. I'm not sure why that 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 conversation ended where it did, but. Believe it was.
I guess the question then is, I mean, there has to be some standards that apply, and in my opinion, it's being utilized, even though it's not. A street by definition.
It's a street.
And the, and we have to apply rules and regulations and and criteria to this, otherwise, I guess then. Based on that, T-Bore, you could maybe just do whatever you want, but I did actually have another question about the. Preliminary work that was done to demolish three fifteen. Were any trees removed from that area that were never identified for removal? Because we had a list of trees that we.
We were very specific.
We were very specific about.
Look at the screen, the trees that were removed are the ones on the approved plan with the red Xs indicated.
So my, but my, so my question is, were any additional trees removed in order to prepare for the demolition of three fifteen? Because presumably, the that, if that house wasn't being touched, then presumably no trees would have been touched near it. So I'm asking a different question, or were any additional trees removed? In preparation for the demolishing of three fifteen, as you stated, you said trees were removed. And that there was excavation equipment. I believe that's what you did say.
Yes, trees that were removed, certainly the trees indicated by red Xs on the approved plan have been removed. I, for example, I cannot comment, I did not study, for example, there's a holly tree between the garage and the house. I do not know if that holly tree still remains.
Was this, if you can go right back where you just were a second, scroll right back up for one sec, just a little inch that you just went. Is this tree and this tree gone?
No, those three, those trees are absolutely there. Okay, this thirty inch maple is absolutely there, this twenty four inch spruce is absolutely there. I think a good example is holly, I can't comment on.
Are those trees getting removed? I have a question that adds to Lorraine's. You have a line of hemlocks that you want to put in around East Glen Avenue. Do you worry that the roots from the hemlocks are going to affect the proposed utility easement? Getting the roots in the, I've had that issue with my houses, getting the roots into the. Utility, and then it all needs to be ripped up and cleaned out.
Yeah, may I ask, are your, that was for your sewer line? That was your sewer line, that that got root intrusion?
It was for both, yeah.
Okay, and is your sewer line PVC, or is it clay or or ductile?
But do, is is this gonna, is it gonna be okay to have those hemlocks right next to it?
Yes, that is, that is normal and customary with modern sewer lines.
And are these trees right here that Melanie was just pointing out, they're gonna need to be removed for the proposed easement?
When you say, I'm not sure which trees you're referring to. For example, this eighteen inch maple would come down to accommodate that utility easement. But I, but I, the prior approval called out for eighteen replacement trees. Thirty five replacement trees are proposed.
And are the replacement trees all gonna be the exact same tree? Are the replacement trees all gonna be the exact same? Are you doing a variety?
There could be, there could be conifers, currently they're specified as hemlocks. Which they're, they do very well. Currently specified as hemlocks, they could be a mix of of Norway spruce, white pine. Hemlocks and deciduous.
They're not really true, I mean, like, the trees you're removing are very tall, big trees. These conifers are just, you know, probably ten, twelve feet that that they're going to grow. I mean, it's not like a, a tree with leaves that, you know, has canopy. Like the current ones do, correct?
Correct.
And so let's go back to in between twenty oh one and twenty oh two, where you show the new trees there. You show them like on the property line. Who's gonna own those trees? It's never a good idea to put trees on a property line.
Okay, we could very easily move those trees to be entirely on twenty point oh one as a condition of approval, no problem.
I'm just saying, you should never put a tree on a property line.
The drive, the neighbors had come on and asked questions or had made mention of there being. Some water issues or drainage issues that they had dealt with after some of this driveway, some of this driveway had been redone. Or as it had been disturbed. Is there any update on, I mean, I'm not sure if you can even speak to it, but. The driveway that we're, sorry.
The proposed plans call out very specific and detailed drainage improvements. For example, looking at twenty point oh two, we have three seepage pits. And a driveway inlet at the end, and actually, that's another advantage of. The side loading garage, because we we provide for an inlet down here and drain this driveway to this inlet. There, there's a seepage pit in the front yard, which will also provide drainage for the existing driveway. If we go down to a lot twenty point oh one, recognize there's extensive impervious surface here today. I actually believe we maybe actually be reducing the impervious surface with redevelopment. We have a trench drain at the end of the driveway, draining to a seepage pit. So comprehensive drainage improvements are specified.
Okay, and the, the driveway that. I I, for whatever reason, you know, we wouldn't want to touch, or you know, because the utility, everything's already under there, or or whatever the reasons you were giving for. Previously for not wanting to touch the driveway, the driveway, how is the, what is your expectation for how the driveway will hold up as it is? With the pretty much constant flow of construction vehicles and trucks coming in and out of there. And the, and the, how is, how do you expect to handle that, and how do you expect the driveway currently to hold up? I understand it's new. But, I mean, I think with the building of two pools and two homes and. All of the rest of this, it's a pretty frequent and consistent amount of traffic coming in and out of a very small area.
The.
What's your expectation, I guess, of how?
My expectation is the driveway will hold up fine. It is going to be saw cut for a nice even edge on the east side. And if it's prudent to top the driveway. Joe Tasco may very well do that, but there is, the driveway is in good shape. And there's no reason it will not stand up to construction traffic, all normal and customary.
So I have another question, just going back to three fifteen one. What is the orientation of the front door of that structure?
Currently, or the new one?
Proposed.
The the formal front door is towards. Yeah, you repeat the question, are you referring to the new home or the existing home?
I know the, the existing home is oriented to to Glenn. What is the proposed home?
It is oriented towards the common driveway.
So when, so now we have, again, I get into this whole, the streetscape. On Glenn, where we, we see the fronts of homes, we see um, there's a whole kind of a visual- Continuity, if you will, of front doors facing the roadway. And so this, by turning this house around in order to achieve this much larger home. Notwithstanding the removal of a house that was represented as remaining. What now, in order to get all these, these amenities? Um, we're going to orient this house so that a side of the house is now facing Glenn. And disrupting the streetscape, so is that as, as, you know, as an architect, as, as- Engineers, as village planners, do we feel that that's appropriate? No, I guess Mary Ann shaking her head, it's not. I can't choose.
To orient.
Yeah, I, I um, I was going to actually ask the same question. I mean, one of the variances is specifically to not front on a dedicated public street. Um, and there is the ability to do that. It wasn't a variance that was granted the last time around, the variance that was granted at the last hearing. Um for fronting um was, for fronting on the driveway was for twenty point oh two, not for twenty point oh one.
I, I agree, Mary Ann, so I appreciate that, and that was specific to my question, is suddenly, in order to accommodate all of these amenities. We're turning, we're orienting the house differently, not fronting on the roadway and in, in- In all of that, we're disrupting the visual streetscape. And I, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, but I, I'm uh very much opposed to that.
I'll just interject for a moment, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I don't wanna interrupt forward questioning. Um, I, I consider that the variance that was granted for fronting on a street not relating to the front of the home itself and and- And I've heard, I've heard the, the issue and I understand the concern, I'll, I'll say that initially. But I also think the variance that was granted, when it, when section thirty-five and thirty-six of the land use law talks about fronting on a street. It means a lot that, that, that has frontage or that abuts a street. It's not talking about how the house is oriented, meaning the quote-unquote front of the house where we might think the front door is facing a street. It's the fact that it, that it didn't abut a public street, that's why, that, that's the variance that was granted for twenty oh two. So I, and the resolution, and I'll just say parenthetically here for the moment, I've heard the comments about the, the, the house to remain. The, the, the resolution on page five, the language cited by Mr. Joel uh is like eight words. It says the existing residents remain on proposed lot twenty point oh one. That is the only reference in this entire resolution to that house remaining. I wasn't at those hearings and I certainly cannot say what was discussed or not discussed, so I stand, please, I should be very clear in that. But to the extent that the board speaks through its resolution. This resolution does not impose a condition that the lot on twenty oh one remain. My perception of it and my reading of the resolution, again, as someone who was not there, but reading the resolution. Indicates that it was descriptive of the application, the way the application was presented was- That the house would remain on twenty oh one. But the resolution doesn't impose that as a condition, it doesn't contain findings about- The style of the home or any significance it may have or anything of that nature, so I'll just interject here legally as, as a, as a- As in terms of our legal position. Uh, this resolution does not impose any conditions upon the uh, the, the, the house on twenty oh one remaining. But, but that having been said, I'll, I just wanted to comment really on the section thirty-five and thirty-six relief. Um, the only lot in this thing that does not front on a street is twenty oh two, twenty oh one fronts on a street. The house may not face the street, and if that's an issue we have to address, obviously, we're gonna consider that and, and, and discuss it with our client for sure, but- I think that's, that, that was the reason for that variance relief.
But David, I, I wanna point out, I was at those meetings.
I know, I know you were, yes, I know.
So and I, I, I wanna just suggest that the application at the time was for a subdivision. And while i- it's not, there's no condition that the house remains, and I, I agree with that, I actually looked for it. It's a representation and mindful that, that there was a much larger discussion that not, having not been there, you wouldn't be aware of. But there were many, many representations that the house was remaining. Well, albeit again, I'll, I'll concede that it's not a condition of approval. But it certainly was a clear representation that was made, and the question then begs to be asked is how suddenly is that house no longer? Um, salvageable?
And I'd like to answer that, I can't answer that, Mr. Litinjic can't. Um, Mr. Tasko, I don't believe it can be on the meeting at the moment. That's Ma- Ma- Madam Mayor, that's clearly, I, I understand the question, we'd like to answer it. That's something he'll have to answer, you know, a couple of years have expired, the property has changed hands, but he'd have to answer that. And, and so, I don't know, he may be able to join us later, uh we'll just have to see, but I'll, we'll work very hard to get an answer to that question for you.
T-Bore speaking, Mr. Tasko's son is graduating high school today. He's at the high school graduation at this moment, perhaps we can reach out to him.
Well, I just, I just, actually, I took a moment and spoke to him a moment ago. Uh, he, he may be able to join us, uh but we'll, we'll have, he's, he's the person that has to answer that question.
Oh, I feel bad, that's, he should, stay where he belongs, we can cover it again.
Yeah, so Mary, your interpretation of fronting on the property is the door is facing the prop- the, the street, I mean, I- It's my interpretation.
No, my inter- no, I don't. I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, that is the front lot line, I mean, if you look at the definitions of, of lots and corner lots. That is the front lot line and that would be, that would be the frontage, the frontage would not be on the driveway. Um, and since there, there are variances involved uh for the, the subdivision itself. Um, I think it does give the board, and I defer to the attorney, but it gives the board the um- Jurisdiction to now look at and evaluate the pro- the entire proposal. Um, and, and I, and identify how it fits in with the ne- with the neighborhood and the existing buildings. Um, that's always the goal and to ensure that there's, you know, no negative impacts on the surrounding property owners. Um, and I think that has to be addressed with this application, and that's a characteristic of this proposal. That really stands out and, and needs to be addressed, cuz there, there's, there doesn't appear to be any reason- To not face the front of East Glen, just like all the other homes on that street.
How wide is the frontage on East Glen there?
It is uh one hundred and fifty feet. Uh where seventy-five feet is required, so it's double uh the frontage.
Right, no, but I'm just saying, there is no reason to face a house sideways when you have under fifty feet. There are several houses in Ridgewood that, I mean, I call them sideways houses, it looks awful. It really does, and this is a main, this is a very active street, East Glen. It's gonna stick out like a sore thumb. Um, you know, I'm totally against not having the front of the house face East Glen. The property is large enough, there should be no reason why you can't. And I also really would like to, to know- What happened to the house that now everybody's, you know, they're saying that it, it's beyond repair. It wasn't beyond repair three years ago, what, what happened?
It was on the mark, it was uh on, on the market as a for sale with, within the last year. With, I don't remember any remarks on it stating it was unsalvageable.
Let me ask you a question, I don't know the answer to this. Is there ever, like when a planning board gives a decision, is there a time limit on- Doing the work, whichever, when the decision is made?
Oh, how long, how long is the approval good for, is what you're asking?
Right, like the resolution was from two thousand and eighteen. Do they, you know, is there a time limit where?
Yeah, we ran into that on, on broad.
Um, I believe. Probably could address that, but they perfected the subdivision, so they have a certain timeframe to do that.
Right?
Yeah.
What is?
Yeah, mine's correct. The map was filed on, uh, let me give you. Well, the town signed the filed map on uh April eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. So this map was filed in uh, in April of two thousand and nineteen. Um.
Yeah, the actual filing date, just to be correct, on the filed map was July nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
The resolution was when, wasn't it two thousand and eighteen?
That's correct, July third, two thousand and eighteen, that's correct.
And is there a time limit from the resolution as to when the work would be done?
Normally, normally there is not. Um, normally the time limits in the municipal land use law and in the ordinance are to um implement- What the variances were granted for, implement uh whether, if it's a site plan or if it's variance is granted, implement the construction associated with that. And in this case, it was a subdivision and they, they executed the subdivision and, and, and so the, that's before you now is a new application. Um, with changes uh to the building, to the buildings. Um, and, and, and the other adjustments that were, were listed at the beginning of the case, but so, so it, it- The, the answer is they, they, it, it's not that they don't have, they, they, they acted within the timeframe, it didn't expire.
Okay.
Um, and the, but I could, I would defer that to the attorney as well, but I, I believe that's why we're here as a new application.
They certainly still have time.
Yeah.
A, a court could inter- intervene in certain instances, a, a, a court of um chancery could say- You know, this is just taking too long, but that's not likely at all, um they've done substantial work since that time. Um, they've gotten a site plan, so i- it's gonna, things take a long time to happen in, in um- In construction law, so uh I would, I would imagine the courts are gonna give them just about any amount of time that they really need that's reasonable.
Okay, I mean, I really didn't, I had no clue what the answer to that question was, I was just curious.
So, T-Bore, I just have another question, so on um the elevations for three fifteen, so that's southern elevation of someone's driving on Glenn. That southern elevation is the, the visual? Presumably, that's the southern.
Uh, I'm not sure which uh elevation you're referring to, but yes, that, that would be the south side. Uh, of the home would face East Glen Avenue.
I'm on the elevation, so not on, on what you have on your screen, I'm on the elevation sheet.
Yes.
There you go, yeah, Madam Mayor, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, so that bottom image is the southern elevation, so if somebody's driving down Glenn and they see all these quaint lo- Level, that's then what they would see, right?
Oh, yes, uh, in addition to the landscaping between the home and the East Glen Avenue.
Okay, well, I, I just was interested in the southern elevation, okay, all right. Um, can we get um, um, the overview of both lots and, and how they- They're configured with the pool and everything together, did you have that?
No, we don't, these are separate distinct lots. And separate distinct plot plans have been uh submitted, they, it happens to be the same owner and applicant. Lots could be sold tomorrow to different property owners.
T-Bore, T-Bore, I understand that, I, I understand that. It's, it's significantly, a significant impact to the surrounding area. So for the purposes of, of better understanding how this lays out completely and it, it, it's in entirety. It's just like giving us a, a plot map of, of seeing all the tiny little homes behind it. You're, you're showing us the little homes, I'm trying to see the whole big picture, and every, every image I have has three fifteen, the original- Structure there, so I'm not really getting the, the, kind of seeing the whole thing, how it would look together. I, I, I completely understand they're separate lots and could be sold.
Susan, I thought they had that in the initial application, remember? Back when it was first heard, I believe they had an aerial, like, global.
Yeah, we, we could, we could certainly, I think Mr. Litinjic certainly could, could show the two- Plot, plot plans on one page, right? I think that's what you're, you're looking for, I understand that.
Right.
So you can see together, you can see how the two homes relate to each other, correct?
Thank you.
Yeah, we could, yeah, we can certainly do that.
I appreciate you articulating what I was trying to say.
That's okay, now we can, and, and I, I certainly hear the board's concern about the orientation of the home on lot twenty point oh one. So I, I've obviously taken note of that as well, yes.
I, I have a couple of questions, please. Um, and this is for, um, I guess T-Bore. And hello, good day, good evening. Um, is there any particular reason why we didn't get any like pictures? Cuz in your other presentations, you always had some kind of picture, which was a little bit more in addition to the site plans. So possibly um some types of pictures of the area, some types of maybe even a three D image. Of, I don't know if you have that type of technology, that where you would put the homes in the, in- In the different plots, because I have no problem with the house going in sideways. Because there's architecturally ways that you can make that side that comes out to the street very beautiful, cuz they did it right here next door to us. Uh, where they, that's one thing that we insisted when they, West Bergen put this facility in. That they make it fit into the community, and it looks very nice here on Broad Street. So you wouldn't even know that there were all those apartments associated to the front of the building. Um, so that's one thing uh with the frontage. Um, the second thing um is, I understand that the mayor is, is asking about the condition of a house. But in three years, anything can happen to the condition of the house when they go in, so possibly um come back with a home inspection. Or a, a home inspection on the house to state why that the house should be torn down. And, and it's not um ren- ren- not able to be renovated, because if we know the age of the house. Pipe, the pipes in the house, the walls in the house, anything could not be um feasible to be renovated. Uh, or used to renovate, so those are just my uh comments and questions.
Okay, in response to your questions, certainly photographs uh could be provided. A three D model is very cost prohibitive. And typically not for, for single family homes, um, that's a significant expense.
That they do use them sometimes, but if you don't have the software, it does become expensive. And what about the, what about uh possibly the home inspection or an explanation why the house would have to be torn down? To be renovate, that lot to be renovated?
I would, I would have to defer to Mr. Tasko in that regard.
And he's the owner?
Yes.
Okay, but he's not, I mean, not an actual professional to tell us why the house would have to be um.
Well, I, I would comment, he has, he has built a s- a substantial number of homes, some in Ridgewood. Um, he is certainly qualified, I mean, he's a licensed contractor of note. Um, very qualified to comment on the condition of that home. Certainly more than your run-of-mail home inspector.
Well, I wouldn't call a home inspector running a mill, that's what. I wouldn't call it running a mill, that bu- that's where castle contractors go to.
Okay.
So, I don't know, that, that's not a nice step comment.
Any further questions? Any further questions of T-Bore?
Yeah, I, I just, I think I, I would like to have the, I, I'm a little bit concerned about how that road is going to be widened. I, I mean, I'm, it, it's not something I've ever seen. I I mean, I'm, it it's not something I've ever seen, I guess it's, you know, not something I'm familiar with, could you just explain that one more time?
They did, and I will, I believe this was discussed at length in the original hearings. I think there was, there was. There was provide, you know, ultimately is providing proper emergency vehicle access. Um, it was discussed originally was, it might have been eighteen feet wide, I believe we widened it to twenty feet in consultation with the village professionals. But the, you want to call it the litmus test is twenty foot is recognized as, uh, proper and adequate for emergency vehicle access.
But I I think I'm asking that the the way that the road will be widened, what you explained, uh, to the chief earlier.
Okay, I, okay, uh, okay, I'm tracing the existing irregular driveway, which is the deep, uh, gray. And when we widen it, it's the lighter gray for a uniform width of twenty feet. As a practical matter, this irregular edge will probably be saw cut. Um, and, uh, then, uh, widen to twenty feet.
So that was in the original plan that it was gonna be widened to twenty?
This is the, uh, we are looking at the original approved plan.
Yeah, in the original plan, you were gonna rip the whole driveway out. And replace the whole thing.
Right.
Because you were gonna put the easement down the driveway.
During the hearings, during the hearings, the driveway was repaved. There, no, it was widening the driveway.
Yeah, but you're also gonna put the utilities under it, so you were gonna have to rip it out.
Uh, reckoning, but there is adequate area, look, there's plenty of room here to be placing utilities. It is, I see no benefit in the disruption of tearing out the existing driveway. Why would it the significant disruption there?
It's a shared driver with the people that live all the way in the back, so it should be done. Because if it's not done right, then they're gonna have to also fix it in the future.
And because it was creating a drainage issue for the people behind them on Sterling Place, that said their basements were flooding because of some of this stuff. There was many reasons, we had even discussed putting the driveway on the other side of the house, I believe the.
Yeah, you see, there's a proposed drainage right up, right there. Because we talked about that.
But is that gonna be enough? I mean, they're putting so much more, they're adding so much more blacktop, they're taking trees that are in that later radiated area.
Well, I believe some of the neighbors had a lot to say to that.
Already have drainage issues.
Okay, the front, to to be clear on that, to be clear, on the front lot twenty point oh one. Bear with me. Thank you for your patience. The existing impervious surface on front lot twenty oh one is seven thousand three hundred and ten square feet. The proposed impervious surface is seventy six hundred square feet or an increase of three hundred square feet. That is a minor increase. But associated with that increase are drainage improvements of a trench drain at the base of the driveway draining to a seepage pit. And a second seepage pit for the roof leaders.
That's for oh one, correct?
So, yeah, yes.
Right.
Take it step at a time.
Okay.
So that is a significant, a significant improvement, three hundred square feet, trench drain, uh, seepage pits, et cetera. If we go to the back lot, I I'll tell you, there's three, the short answer is that there's three seepage pits there now, uh, three seepage pits proposed.
Three more seepage pits proposed, or three there now that are being?
Three, there are no drainage improvements whatsoever today. And 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 we are installing three seepage pits. Um, if you look at the plot plan, three seepage pits, uh, uh, inlet at the end of the driveway. All the roof leaders are connected to a seepage pit, there is a front yard seepage pit that is really benefiting the existing driveway. So the drainage is well addressed.
Can you go over the impervious coverage increase in numbers for lot oh two, please, quickly?
Yeah, so clearly, it's a vacant lot.
Well, I know, but where are you at percentage wise, if you wouldn't mind?
Oh, it's well, well under the ordinance. Um, forty percent is permitted with the pool, thirty two point five percent.
I just remember the the neighbor saying that after they repaved it, they had a lot of.
Basement flooding.
Basement flooding, so we put that that trench in the driveway to.
And what we did was.
So you took that trench away?
Yes, and what we did was, is we're pitching the driveway away from the from the common driveway. We moved that trench drain to the end of this driveway where it's more effective, because we're picking up this, uh, driveway area as well. If if the village would like move this straight, this in, if your judgment, this inlet is better served here, we can do that.
That was your testimony at the last.
Yeah, but it, but yes, but we substituted. Well, yes, we substituted a side loading garage, if remember, before it was a front loading garage. Now it's a side loading garage, so we can put the dr- inlet at the end of the driveway. We will. We we can do it either way, in my opinion, this is the better design, which is why we changed it.
I'd say both.
I was gonna say both.
We had a lot of testimony from the neighbors that how it's, after P C and G repaved it, there's flooding in the back there. It had nothing to do with your driveway. That's why you were gonna put that there.
That's so true.
It would be hard to argue that two is better than one.
Now, I just wanted to ask a question about that driveway. So when we're traveling in, when we get to that part, that's where the actual driveway enters into twenty point oh two, is that where the twenty five foot wide easement ends, and then we're reverting back to the more narrow, is that what that is?
Uh, I believe the easement is continuous to the, uh, property owners to the rear, let's call up the filed map. There is, here's the filed map, twenty five foot access easement granted, so they the twenty five foot access easement goes the length of the property.
I I understand that, T-Bore, that's not what I actually asked, I asked, is is the paved part of it ending where that driveway to twenty oh two? Um, access to the driveway, is that where the paved area is proposed to end?
The twenty foot paved area e- ends at the driveway entry to twenty point oh two. The existing driveway to the north remains.
So, so now, I'm concerned, because if I'm driving, you know, it can get dark back there. And I don't know how the neighbors feel about this, but to me, it just seems like all of a sudden where that whole, this going to be like a drop off, and people are going to drive into what, dirt or trees? How is that?
There there this, uh, clearly, these these just pavement, there will be no drop off here. Um, this pavement will be at the same level, there's no drop off. There was, our original proposal was extending the twenty foot wide driveway all the way through northern property line. It was based on comments from the neighbors, particularly in regards to this one large maple. Was not to improve this, fully improve this section of the, uh, driveway. Um, so it will, it'll be a twenty foot drive wide driveway up to the driveway entrance of twenty point oh two, and then the existing driveway will remain as is.
Yeah, I'd be a little concerned, because to me, that that all of a sudden narrowing of the driveway seems a little off putting to me, I don't know about anyone else, but.
Maybe you could make it more gradual, because it does go from wide to narrow, like.
So we put a a fillet of pavement where my cursor is, yes.
I do remember there being extensive conversation about saving that tree.
Mm-hmm, right, but I'm just, I'm only pointing out that that sudden turn into the one.
You're saying like right here, do something to smooth it out, I'm drawing on it with red, right there.
How are you doing that?
Magic.
Isn't that?
It's T-Bore's screen, but.
How can you do that?
Yeah.
So like right here, because you just click annotate at the top. You click view options at the top and you can annotate. I only know because my students did it to me while I was trying to teach them, and I had to learn how to stop them.
Here, I would imagine that, oh, yeah, see, here you go, look at that, oh, I'm doing that, okay, good. All right, so I don't know if we can undo what I just did.
You have to hit clear at the time. And now stop your annotation.
I don't know how to do that. All right, I don't, oh, there it is, I see, oh, nice, okay, I learned something new tonight. Yeah, so I just, I feel like that's a little bit too much of an abrupt.
Yeah, try, transition can be provided.
Yeah, it needs something, okay. All right.
Any other questions from the board? All right, uh, do our professionals have any questions of T-Bore? Mary Ann or Chris?
Um, I I have one minor question, um, when we went out to the site, um, there were some, uh, very large evergreen trees on the site already, um, just sitting, waiting to be, it looks like waiting to be planted. I guess I want to, um, just confirm how many those are, and if the the locations, um, on this plan. I I actually would not like, if you can put up the current proposed plan and not the old plan, I would appreciate that.
This is, um, the the plan on the screen is the proposed plan for lot twenty point.
I I'd like to see, if you can, maybe you can split your screen and put both proposed plans so that everyone can see where the, uh, the 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 landscaping will be located. And, um, and also, my question is, why are there evergreen trees along the side of twenty point oh one? Um, but not twenty point oh two along the driveway?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, uh, this, well, this was, uh, proposed improvement, did, it's a pretty ugly concrete block walls.
No, I think that was background noise.
Okay. Okay, and, uh, this is a well wooded area, there was, basically due to concerns of of particularly this thirty six inch, the perspective was less disturbance, uh, in this area, the better.
Anything further, Mary Ann? Whoop, you're muted. You're muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, I think that, um, I think it was already requested a plan that shows both. Um, and, um, at the same, and everything at the same time, so you can clearly get a, get, get the full picture of what's being proposed. The other thing I think you should also think about at this point in time, since it it always does come up, is, um, fence fences that might be proposed with these new buildings as well, so that the board can see what you're, um, thinking. Because based on the definitions of front and side and rear lot lines, um, since this is not an actual street and you're, you know, you're making that claim, that means that the locations of permitted fences are gonna be in an odd location and not typical of what's the in the rest of the community. So I think you should think about that now and propose it in conjunction with these homes.
The fences are shown on the plan, uh, fenced enclosing, uh, the pool areas required by code. Uh, so here on twenty point oh two, we, the fences are indicated on the plan.
But that's just for the pool, because that's a, that's, has a construction code requirement. I'm talking about for the future, um, as future residents, if someone comes in and looks to buy or purchase twenty point oh two or twenty point oh one, when they come in and if they then go to the zoning officer after the fact and ask for a fence, um, and even though this is, now this is, you know, how how those standards will get applied will be a little different, um, on these lots. Um, they won't really match up, even though the current ordinance standards may treat a a corner lot one way. This almost functions like a corner lot, uh, but it's technically not, right? Um, so how that, how the fencing works on that, on the, on the, on the front of the building along East Glen, um, we we just, I just think it might be something that you should address now, so it doesn't become an issue later, it it sort of, you know, will will indicate, will will be helpful to identify and eliminate problems down the line.
To, and particularly, and I realize I'm supposed to answer questions, not ask questions, but let me go out on a limb here. Um, particularly since we're gonna be preparing a composite plot plan. Can we get some basic direction as to the opinion of the board on the side loading versus the front loading, uh, garage? We believe side loading garage is a benefit for aesthetics or parking, snow, storage, et cetera. Um, if we're gonna be coming back with a composite plot plan, if if the board prefers a front loading garage, um, as per the original approved plan, that that's easily accommodated, we just put the, we put the driveway here, okay? Can we, and I defer to David, I should stop talking and I defer to David here, but that's kind of a threshold question.
Oh, I I'll agree with that, I mean, I I indicated, and I'm I'm really compelled to comment now that uh, and I indicated in my opening statement that this is a subdivision application, it's not a site plan application. Uh, that having been said, we are here, uh, with the intent of of, uh, resolving any concerns or issues the board may have, so I would join in that. If the board has thoughts about, uh, the side versus the front loading garage, we we'd like to hear that. Uh, and we can consider that, just as the board has given us its concerns about the orientation of the home on twenty oh one.
So I, and I don't want to dismiss or ignore my concern that this would require a variance um, from the roadway, because when I'm looking at this to the fun, front entrance way, can, I don't know if somebody can do a measurement on that. It looks like just from that, uh, to the front step, it's, it appears to be less than twenty five feet from the roadway.
It is not, it is, it is a driveway, not a roadway.
All right, T-Bore, I'm I'm, we're gonna, we're, I'm not gonna battle of of what it is or isn't. I'm going to say that there has to be a standard applied, there are vehicles traveling down the 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 whatever we want to call it. I believe that while it's not a municipal roadway, that there has to be a standard that applies, because because if we're not going to apply a standard, then we have to have some criteria, whether it's fence, then, then what you're, you're essentially saying is that, well, it doesn't apply to have a fence around the pool and it doesn't have to have this or it doesn't have to have that. So we have to apply a standard and I believe the standard is that it is a, a flag lot where this house is being constructed. It's a large house, there's a lot going on. We have a pool, we have a whole bunch of amenities here, but the house appears to be twenty five feet from whatever it is, the blacktop.
Let me address that, let me address that question. The approved preliminary subdivision showed a fifty five foot setback to the eastern property line. The proposed plot plan shows a fifty five foot setback from the front porch to the eastern si- uh, sideline and sixty two point two feet to the body of the house. If we go to the filed map, which the municipality approved and signed, it is indicated a thirty foot accepted front yard setback. This question has been asked, it's been answered, and on the signed filed final map.
Well, the representation at the time, we had a different planner. The planner is now stating that it, it is a variance that's required. You're here now, where, where discussing this and what I'm asking the planner for is if she stands by her assertion that it requires variance relief. She wrote it, it's her, it's what she's made a recommendation to the board. She's our professional, I'm asking.
Okay, in fairness to the planner, uh, you know, to, you know, in fairness to the planner, scrutinizing the filed map, not knowing the history of this application. This was specifically addressed on the filed map. Would you see my cursor? Thirty foot accepted front yard setback, thirty, thirty foot from the twenty five foot access easement, which makes it fifty five feet from the easterly sideline.
T board, I'm gonna say that there's a, there was a representation back then that it didn't require variance relief. I always disagreed. And now I'm asking the planner to weigh in.
So, um, if I, if I didn't believe that it applied, I, I wouldn't have put it in the report. But I, and I also want to kind of speak to what, what T board is pointing at with the thirty five feet and all this items stated in the filed map. Things stated in the filed map and things associated with the approval are, are being asked, you're reading, you're, you're, you're looking to make changes to what was originally heard and approved by the board. And I, I know, uh, obviously any argument that you, you, as an applicant, you want to make to your advantage would be to identify and pull out everything that you possibly can to say that this was already granted. But overall, and I'll defer to the board attorney, um, for this as well. Overall, the board gets purview on the entire application. When it comes before the board as a subdivision with variances, even though you don't have a site plan to look at, in order to choose whether you can justify and the board wants to, the, the board has to choose whether they want to grant those variances, they need to see the bigger picture. And the buildings that are proposed and the improvements associated with them um, are all part of the package of what's before the board. And so the board will be able to decide whether, you know, they can ask you which way the garage driveway faces and what type of home is going to be on that, on that lot, because there's variances associated with that lot. So they have the ability to i- identify and look at the bigger picture. And they looked at that the first time, um, and now there's changes and they get to look at it again. Um, and, and you know, there, there's, there, it's up to, I mean, I think I'm going to defer to the attorney as far as filing the plat and making, uh, making adjustments to that. Um, and you're looking at a subdivision where you're not looking to essentially change the proposal, the proposed two new lots, but you are changing the characteristics um, and the development associated with those two lots and there's variances associated. So the board has the ability to, um, make a new judgment based on the current conditions, um, at the site. Um, I believe that there is a variance for that setback. Um, I am not familiar with the, the case that, uh, Mr. Rutherford pointed out um, as far as already being adjudicated and granted. And so that law, I, I will defer to the board attorney for that interpretation. Um, and I think that's part of this decision as well. It's not just whether it's my view, whether it's a front yard setback barriers from the easement or not. You also have to look at whether or not the previous granting, um, as Mr. Rutherford talked about matters in this case, and I'll defer that to, um, to our attorney.
I, I feel compelled at this point to set forth our legal position. Our legal position is that this subdivision was approved, memorialized by resolution and memorialized by filed map. Mr. Tasco has vested rights in that approval. Our position is that the changes that are being made here are, are inconsequential and do not relate to the terms and conditions under which that variance approval was required. I believe that Mr. Tasco is entitled to rely upon the factual and legal determinations made by the board during the course of the first approval. Um, I believe, and our legal position is that, as I indicated at the very beginning, this is not a site plan application, it's a subdivision application. Uh, and I appreciate what Ms. Bucci Carter just said. I understand that. I understand there were variances here. Those variances were considered and they have been granted. They were granted by the board in the first approval based upon a conceptual plan for twenty oh two, without a condition that the home on twenty oh one remain that did not prohibit a new utility easement, which hopefully everyone can agree is a beneficial thing. Um, so, you know, we're here because we, we, uh, these, these changes were directed us to be here. And we are here certainly, um, with the intent of trying to address and resolve board concerns, no question about that. Um, but I also felt compelled to say, you know, this is not an application all over. We are coming into this based upon an approval and, and considering only the changes that we propose, which we don't think impacts that approval in any way, quite honestly, but we're here to resolve those because Mr. Tasco wants to move forward and hopefully we all agree moving forward with this project is a good thing, so. Uh, but I'll, I'll have more to say about that and, and probably address the legal memo to the board and, you know, Mr. Welling Horse will have to deal with those issues as well. But all of that having been said, because I need to outline the legal position, all of that having been said is, yes, we are hearing concerns. Uh, certainly we want to hear what interested parties had to say this evening as well. We're gonna, gonna try to address those concerns as, as best we can. Um, and, and hopefully, uh, you know, come up with something that's gonna, that's, that everyone can live with, so.
And can we get direction? Straw poll, whatever is appropriate on side loading versus front loading? And similarly with this easement, we believe both have benefits. If there are different opinions, um, we would like to hear them so we can incorporate them into the composite plot plan.
Okay, Marion, did you have any further questions?
Um, I have no questions. I, I think what I might want to do is just say one more thing, which I didn't, I, I don't think I, I said very clearly. Um, and I'd like to just make sure, um, I, I get this point across because I, I do believe that and maybe our attorney can, can comment on this as well. Um, I, I think that, um, the argument, um, that's being made saying that the homes that were proposed originally, because only a footprint was identified in the resolution means that those, that any home can be built. I, I disagree with that because I think the approval is based on what the board saw and presented at the public hearing to the board members and any members of the public that came to see the presentation. Um, and the approval is some total of that. And just because, um, in some cases, if this was a conforming application or even if it was a minor variance, the, there, there would be a footprint where the building could be built. And if the board wasn't shown the building or was, they could build whatever type of design was there. That's a different story, but in this particular case, there were variances involved and there was a certain building shown. So it's not just the orientation of the garage, it's the entire structure. And it's the orientation of the structure, it's everything about the structure and any other accessory structures and landscaping on the lot. So it's part of the sum total and, and I think that that is, um, the same issue here with this application. And just because, um, the resolution doesn't say that was a condition of the approval, doesn't mean it wasn't part of what was presented and represented to the board. Um, that's, that becomes part of, um, you know, the, uh, the, the facts that were presented and part of the decision. So you can't take it away later on. It's the sum total of the proposal and that's all I want to say.
Okay. Uh, Chris, uh, Rutter House, or do you have any questions for T board?
Uh, the only question that came up there that I didn't mention in further detail in my review memo is, uh, which flood hazard area maps did they use for delineating that southwest corner of lot twenty point oh one as being in the flood hazard area? I don't know, I don't recall if you had a reference.
Okay, it, it was the up to date FEMA map at the time of the application. Um, so that was two thousand and eighteen, so that was probably the two thousand and fourteen primary FEMA map. And we could verify that.
Uh, yeah, if you could, because the maps, they could be, gonna be adapted by the village in the next coming months. And if there's any changes, it'd be good to reflect those on the drawing.
Okay, uh, Steve Wellenhorst, did you have any questions for T board?
I, I don't have any questions. When, when it's appropriate, I would like to address, uh, some of the things that have been discussed.
Okay, sure. All right, uh, I'll open it up to cross from the, uh, public. This will be of T board Latinxus and it'll relate to his testimony. So you can raise your hand. The moderator Dylan Hanson will let you in. You state your name and address. And then you can ask questions of T board related to his testimony.
All right, first person is Mary Lou Poston. We're in, we're in.
Yep.
All right. Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm here.
Put your video on and, uh, just state your name and address.
All right. Mary Lou Poston is four eighteen Sterling Place. Okay, I think I put the video on. I've never used it before, so.
Yeah, we can see you.
Uh, I back the new lot faces the back of my house. And that's my large tree that I fought to protect the last time, so I still have a few questions. One, the twenty foot, twenty five foot driveway, I wanted to confirm there's only twenty feet that are paved.
Yes.
All right, because Sterling Place that fronts my house is twenty five feet paved, or twenty four feet. So this already is almost a road that I wasn't happy about, but at least the fact it didn't go all the way up by, behind my house is good. But we have many cars coming to Sterling Place do wild U-turns when they think they're the wrong place. I still think this could happen here. And I think putting the front house, which wasn't part of the first plans to change, as facing this driveway, which is going to have a stop sign to the average person, that's going to be a road. And I think it's going to get a lot of traffic, other than the traffic just for the houses that are already there. And I hadn't thought about, but when Susan says the bend to go into this house, if there's no structure, fence, something on that bend, I think a lot of cars are going to shoot off onto the dirt. I also want to make sure that I know he's talked about the grading. I had done research at the time of this and saw that part of the property was in the flood zone. And many trees, very large hundred year old trees have come down and I know some green trees are being put in and there are some trenches. I'm not sure up by the back of our property that that's one, the new house has to be totally graded away from the driveway. But two, I'm concerned because when P and G repaved the driveway, they raised it over ground level. So water runs off and heavy rains into our yard. And in the empty lot now where the trees had been, had fallen down or were cut down, water runs into their lot too. So the whole drainage issue concerns me. Uh, as long as there's concern to make sure that water is not coming off that driveway into our yard. And I know it's not showing on the original plan, but a number of trees were taken down on the property line. Several of them were dead and I was happy to see them go because they had fallen down in pieces and took my fence out. But there are no red X's here showing trees were going to come down, but a number on that side did.
Uh, Mary Lou, can you, can you frame things as a question to T board? You're kind of more like public comment. That's another section of the, uh.
I'm sorry. Uh, I'm concerned to make sure that it's graded so that with all this building and all the trees coming down and everything else, that there isn't more water coming back onto our property. Uh, there are no new trees coming in along property line on our side of the drive that goes to the back, but quite a few old trees were taken down in there. Some not healthy, but you know, I want to make sure that, that the trees soak up a lot of water and if they're not there, that to me means more water coming on my property.
Okay, in addressing your drainage questions, okay. And I can indicate, this new driveway drains away from your property. These are spot elevations. This is elevation ninety eight point two and it drops eight tenths of a foot. So this section of the new driveway drains away from your property. We have an inlet on top of a seepage pit at the end of the driveway to collect that runoff. Uh, go, go to, go, go, to go to the front of the lot, yes, this, this existing driveway, some of it drains to your property. We are not touching that. However, in the front of this, we have, we're creating a gentle low area. That's what, this is the, a ninety seven contour. And at that low area, we are putting an inlet a grate to a seepage pit. So there has been particular attention paid, uh, to your drainage concerns.
To that side of the driveway.
Yes.
Is it my house side of the driveway where train, trees were removed and aren't being replaced.
So, is she, are you lost seventeen?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. My big old maple, I managed to protect. But then going up the property line, I don't know how many, several of them were dead and I was happy to see them go because they kept falling down, taking my fence out, but all the trees that were cut down were not dead and, at least in my opinion.
So. Went, and he's just, that just happened or that did not, that was before this?
Construction, the, the dead ones coming down took my fence out many times, so we left the fence off.
So in the last few months, there have been trees removed.
And trees were cut on the rest. They were taken on the property line and my husband did go out and ask them if they were going to take the dead ones and they said yes. So I was very happy about that, but they took other ones that in my opinion weren't dead. So that would increase the amount now if there was some grading done. I don't know what could do to help, but that, there is runoff. It got worse when P S D N G paved it. I know the builder didn't pay, so. But the trees do help the drainage.
Mary Lou, if you're looking at the screen right now, uh, off of, you know, and to the side of your property, there shows like a fifteen inch maple, a twelve inch maple, another twelve inch maple, a six inch maple. Are you saying that they're all gone now?
Some of the ones in that area are, I don't know if the thing up at the end is the big giant thing at the end that I fought to protect was actually an oak and I think it's listed as a maple.
It looks like a cherry, like how far, oh, oh, this, this, the one that they're doing the cursor on right now says maple?
Yeah, that's an oak, that's a cherry oak in there.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I didn't see that on the little teeny tiny print there, but some of the ones that farther up on the driveway were removed. As I say, some of them were dead and I was happy to see them go. some of the ones that farther up on the driveway were removed. As I say, some of them were dead, and I was happy to see them go because they kept falling into our yard, and we had to cut them up. But they weren't all dead, and I don't see anything replacing them. And I don't see drainage on that side to accommodate. And that's probably because it's in the quote common drive or whatever, but it is part of my concern.
Well, I guess the question, I, if I, can I, it's Mary, if you're asking a question, what's your question then?
Well, it, I don't see that there are trees going to go in there.
Okay, we could, there's two, there's two tree, for example, there's two trees on the right hand. We could easily move these two trees to the east side of the driveway. That's easily accommodated.
Okay, as long as that, you know, doesn't do in the roots. Again, I'm protective of my very big oak. That's one question. And you know, the grading, as long as the driveway grading, I'm assuming from the driveway where you showed that circle oval area that the grading was going to go from the current driveway down to that since
Yes.
property now is way below that.
Yes, this, this ninety seven contour is below the level of the driveway. That, that's, that's
But is the driveway tapering to that?
Excuse me? Okay, there, there are whatever water runs off the driveway towards the west will be, will drain to this, uh, seepage pit. There, this area is not being, other than some landscaping perhaps, there's no changes between the driveway and your property line. Quite frankly, this driveway section is the responsibility of the neighbors to the north. It's their driveway.
I thought it was a joint driveway, but.
Well, yes, there's three, there's three, there's three property owners. There's three homes done. You know, number, uh,
No, no, I'm aware.
Seventeen, three twenty one and three nineteen. That is their driveway. Okay, the proposed driveway, we are pitching away from your property to this inlet and seepage pit. And we're putting a seepage pit in a low point in the front of the house for the roof leaders. And yes, whatever sheets off the driveway uh, off the neighbor's common driveway, there'll be a benefit. But there are no improvements proposed between the driveway and the easternly property lines.
Now, are you proposing raising the ground level to eat to the driveway on the left side and on the new, where the new home is? Is that driveway in the back? The driveway in the back is above the ground level of the homes in the back. So for the runoff to go to your new area, how is that going to happen?
I, I'm tracing the ninety. Look, this is, this is the ninety seven existing contour. That's the gray dashed line. And this is the proposed ninety. We are holding, we are maintaining natural grades in the front yard here uh, as well as creating a low point with an inlet and seepage pit.
So it's going to be lower in the front of the house rather than closer to the driveway height?
Yes.
Which may make the driveway runoff on it more. And all right, I have to understand why that's going to help the driveway runoff if it's lower there.
Yeah, it's, it's
Protect that house.
Okay, what, what we're not doing is raising this house up and pitching the front yard to the driveway, which would be quite frankly, normal and customary. Due to the drainage condition here, we are holding natural grades, creating a shallow low point with a seepage pit in this front yard. Um, and if I, if I'm not explaining that well, I will defer to Mr. Rudishausser.
I would just, you know, ask the person who has way more knowledge of this than I do, who is, you know, on the Ridgewood team to ensure that I'm not going to get more water with what's going on because out of my league.
Okay, did you have any further questions, Mary Lou of Tabor?
One I want to confirm is only going to be twenty five foot easement, but a twenty foot driveway up front. It's not going wider, correct?
Correct.
Okay, is it already, you know, with the houses facing on it, I'm concerned. Uh, I just want to voice my concern. And then during construction, I see the wheel blanket to keep stuff from floating through the yards and all. And I understand there has to be a space for people to drive to the back, but I'd also like to have some kind of protection. So through that space debris doesn't come flying into my property.
Uh, yes, the, the, we will, we specify silt fence uh, on the site. We can clarify that to put it along without disturbing the oak. Without disturbing oak tree, you could specify silt fence. We'll put it on, on the west side of the driveway, right along the driveway, we will put a silt fence. Um, and this is again, I, I hope to see if we do get some direction, some of these concerns, the side loading garage just provides more area in the long term, and certainly during the construction period. For example, we have our wheel blanket here. You know, that, that crushed stone would be extended during construction. It gives you a place to store lumber, drop a dumpster, all those things. I, I hope tonight we get some direction on the side versus front loading garage.
Okay, I have one other really two questions. One is that you could put something in the plan to say that construction people are not going to be using my yard as a bypass? There, yeah.
Certainly, certainly.
Because that's not acceptable. And the last one, which I don't know quite how to resolve this, I brought into the last meeting, I think before things were approved, the survey I had had updated that disagreed with the survey now we had by, you know, inches or so, but on the property line. I thought that the new owner would have a new survey and they didn't. So I'd like to know how to resolve this because eventually I want to put my fence back up.
Oh, we can resolve that. Um, we could communicate on that. Um, if you could provide your contact information to Mr. Rudhauser, and if you could provide it to me, um, we can discuss that with your surveyor.
I did give you a copy at that meeting then. I can get another make copies and leave them. Forget them, but I had presented one to the, uh, planning board and one to your Calvi's attorney at the time.
Um.
Yeah, Mary Lou, there's a totally different attorney now. So if you have a copy, you might want to just email it to Tabor and, uh.
I don't, I don't have a home computer. This is my first time trying to do Zoom, you know? So I can get a go to the Ridgewood Library and make a copy.
Yeah, sure. We will work to resolve that. We don't want to, if there's a survey issue, we'll resolve it.
It's not a big, but it's enough that I do want to put my fence back up eventually. And we've left it down because the dead trees kept taking it out. So.
I understand.
Okay, I can drop a copy at your office if you want. If it doesn't need to have the raised seal, otherwise I can go back and try to get that.
No raised seal is needed. If, if, if you wish to get it to my office, that's fine. I'm very happy to receive it. And I'll get it to Mr. Litinjic. Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mary Lou.
You're welcome.
Okay, is there anyone else from the public that would like to ask questions? Please raise your hand and state your name and address.
We do have another Denise Lima. I'm ordering her right now.
Okay.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yep, yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. And thank you to the people on the planning board for echoing a few concerns that, um, we had as well. Um.
Can you turn on your video Denise? And then just state your address, just so we have it for the record.
Yes, no problem. My video is not going to be on tonight. It's three nineteen East Glen Ave, Ridgewood, New Jersey. Um, so, um, the first thing I want to say is that, you know, not an expert here, but the drawings I definitely felt were difficult to read. Um, you know, as we took the two thousand and eighteen and superimposed some of the information. So some of the questions I'm asking, um, might be there. I just, I just can't see them. So I appreciate that. I echo and had in my notes also that it would be great to see a flow of both houses. Now, I think um, you mentioned putting the two homes on one page, and I don't think we want a side by side. I think what we're looking for is a drawing that shows in proportion from East Glen Ave, you know, to twenty oh one to twenty oh two. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that. Um, I want to just ask the questions about definitions. In the application, it says existing easement uh, underneath the access driveway. Um, and I've heard that, you know, different terms, but that easement that you're referring to is the gas and water utilities underneath the driveway?
I believe the answer is yes. There's a six foot utility easement um, underneath the driveway.
Okay, and that driveway today is paved at ten feet. Um, just for, for purposes, there's some soil erosion notes, number eight, that uses the term lane. So if you just want to make that consistent, that would be great. On soil erosion, it says common driveway. Um, opposed to the access driveway. So it's just, I think it's super important that we have common definitions. Also in the soil erosion, you say public roadway. What, what is that? What are you referencing there?
When you're referring to the soil erosion control notes?
Yes.
And specifically which note?
Uh, there's one that mentions, um.
They're numbered.
Yeah. Well, you don't have many notes there if you're pulling them up.
Good. Yes, I have the soil erosion control notes.
Yeah, and there's one that says roadway. And I get, I'm just, what does that mean? Does that mean the driveway or does that mean roadway as in three fifteen East Glen?
Oh, it's number eight. I see paved road, roadway.
Okay, it states a crushed stone vehicle wheel cleaning banquet shall be stalled wherever a construction access roads intersects any paved roadway. Again, recognize these are somewhat generic notes, you know, uniform for the county. But that is exactly what we show where we have a wheel blanket on the driveway where it intersects the paved roadway paved, which is the same as the paved driveway. So it's just, it's, uh, this is
It looks like it's right on top of the driveway. And how long is construction going to last?
Uh, typically I would budget a year. Uh, Mr. Pasco has noted to build quickly. Um, but I would certainly, as a, depends on when it starts, what time of the year, but normally it's put into budget a year.
Okay, there's, there's something in the construction notes that says the stockpiles should not be located, note number seven, stockpile should not be located fifty feet from flood plain. Oh, and thank you, Chris, for mentioning the maps, uh, roadway and roadway. And I think roadway in that sense means, right, maybe three fifteen. I would, I would say that it should be fifty feet away from the common driveway as well. It should not be on top of or that close as you're depicting it. Because rain flooding, the, the, the soil is all going to come down. It's going to snow. I don't even know where you're going to put like snow removal. Nobody's even talked about that. Um, you know, with the snow we've had recently, it's certainly not going to the east of the driveway. It's going to have to go to the left. And if you have that blanket there with all the construction stuff, it's going to be an ugly mess. So I would ask the Ridgewood experts and engineers um, to think about moving that away to be fifty feet as well. Um, right away is mentioned also, I'm assuming that's synonymous to the common driveway. Um, and then there's another utility easement, just getting back to definitions. So next to the ten foot driveway, where you said sixty underneath easement is for gas and water. Next to it is telephone poles, telephone cable, wifi, uh, all of that type of stuff. How is, how are you recognizing that in, in your plans here? Like where, where is that?
Well, if I, if you look at my screen, this is where a transmission pole is. That overhead electric will remain and will be underground uh, from that utility pole to the new home. The other utility poles are noted on the plan. Uh, here's another utility pole.
Okay, so the utility poles, just in my layman's terms, I'm so sorry. Uh, means that the telephone poles are going to stay for and not be disrupted, um, for the homes in the back, which most of us are working from home now because of the virus. Um, so we need to make sure there's no disruption and it's, and it's a hundred percent up. And what is the width of that utility easement? Because I don't see any surveys or maps from Verizon or anybody with that utility. What's the width of that easement?
Okay, you're, you're talking about the, the inherent easement the power company has for the overhead um, power?
Yeah.
Yeah. To my, to my knowledge, I I would have to back check the title search. I don't think they have a written easement. I think it's just been there forever. Um, and they have, if you want electricity, they have right of access. I would have to back check the title search, uh, but I do not believe I don't remember seeing an easement in favor of the power company.
So, so given all of this new change and it's dynamic, and we're going to modernize, what is the recommendation on what that width should be? Is it going to be paved over? What, like, what are the rules for that?
I'm not, if, if you clarified a question, you're asking that should the
Well, what, what's the recommendation with, what should we do with that, that easement or lack of an easement?
Which, which easement?
For the utility for the telephone and electric?
It's I, I think the term is prescriptive easement. The power of the poles have been there. And I suspect you know better than I, but for a very long time.
Yeah, but now, but now we're modernizing, right? Now we're modernizing, and now's the time to make a change, I would think. And who's, like, whose property is that going to run on? Twenty oh one, I guess, twenty oh two? It's going to continue?
Well, the, 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 the utility poles are on both lots, yes.
Yeah. Okay, I don't know if Chris
Actually, you're making a very good argument for the easement that we proposed, which is ten foot wide. And we could modify that easement to include uh, the, the overhead utilities. That's a ten foot wide easement. That's easily accommodated. If we get direction on the board's opinion on this ten foot easement, we can incorporate those utility poles. No problem.
Okay. Um, the question. Uh, let me just go to the square footage, uh, land size and information that you mentioned earlier. Um, when you're quoting the footprint, the footprint, uh, includes, you could stay on twenty oh two because the principle is the same. The footprint includes the, the easements, the driveway, and whatever remaining property for the trees, I guess it's five feet, uh, is all considered part of the lot in your calculations for footprint?
The the area of the lot is seventeen thousand twenty nine square feet. I'm pointing it with my cursor.
Yep.
If we exclude this twenty five foot access easement, the area of the lot, the remain, the remaining area is fourteen thousand one the area of the lot, the remain, the remaining area is fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty four square feet where the zoning requires ten thousand five hundred square feet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm not questioning that rule, but the, but the lot in principle extends all the way out to the easternmost line there, right?
It, it, the lot extends to the property line.
Yeah, which is, which is if you put your cursor to the right.
Okay, I, I'm going to trace the lot. These are the lot lines.
Yep.
Come down. And these are staked in the field. These, these corners have been set. And then then it, you know, continues back to its point of origin here.
Okay, and in that total lot, uh, seventeen thousand square foot, that easement that's going through it, that land that, that is on, is that lots being taxed for that easement?
Yes.
Yes. So you made a comment earlier saying that's not twenty dot oh two's driveway, but in fact it is because they're paying taxes and we expect them to keep up with the maintenance. So when the snow's on it, they need to make sure we can come in and out. They can't block it.
I, I am going to defer to David Rutherford. If the owner of lot twenty point, of, of the owner of twenty point oh two has any obligation to plow the driveway leading to the homes to the rear.
Not to the rear, not to the rear. The, the easement that's within twenty oh two, that paved easement is owned, it's part of their lot.
On their property.
It's on their property. They pay taxes on that easement part. It's theirs. They're paying a third of the fee related to the taxes. And the other two properties in the back pay a third and a third. So it's a third, a third, a third, which means they should be doing the maintenance. I just wanted to make sure.
Now, that's, that's a huge leap. I defer to David Rutherford.
I, I'll have to look at the easement agreements and try to get an answer to that. I don't know that necessarily that's an issue that the board can determine. But that's, as I said, it's a legitimate issue. I'm very happy to look at and advise.
Thank you. Staying with the, um, the size and the, the lot, you mentioned a few times the change in the driveway instead of being frontage being on the side. I see that it's a two car garage. What, and I can't read, so my apologies because it looks like there's trees and they were cut out and I'm not really sure, but what, what, just generally, what, what is the width? So I guess it's twenty five. I'm trying to understand the size of that side parking. And how many cars would you say could fit into that side parking? Not only in front of the garage, but if you back up the cars all the way to the, the pavement, I'd say six car additional cars?
If you park carefully, uh, I would agree with five or six that we have the that we call, that we call this a hammerhead here. You can certainly fit a car here and that also just it makes it much easier when you back out, you, you know, you make a forty five degree and you go, okay, certainly fit a car here. You can certainly, well, two cars in the garage. You could, if you have guests over, you could have two cars here and certainly two more here. So if you, if someone is, is having guests over, you can certainly accommodate five, maybe six.
And twenty dot, and I would agree. And then, and twenty dot oh one is a similar schematic, so two plus five or six.
Yes, uh, we do, we have a front loading garage in that case. But, um, bear with me here, um.
See, when you combine the two, it's going to be really nice. You could just go up and down instead of switching.
If you park tightly, you can fit four cars in this parking lot plus two, of course, two in the garage.
Okay, so that's six. Okay, so, and I'm, I'm going to ask, so now we have a total of twenty six cars. Six for the three houses back here, another eight, another six. We're talking about twenty five, twenty six cars. What considerations were made in this new plan to safety in and out of the cars coming in and out of the driveway and twenty five cars now coming out of, into East Glen Ave as kids are walking up and down to go to school because I know that was a huge concern in the first go around. And I, I also would like to ask, uh, the chief, you know, who is worried about safety and brought this up at the last time. Did he look at it and does he have any concerns again with now that we're shifting the house to the side instead of the front, additional, additional concerns?
That's a question to me or the chief?
Well, first is what considerations as the architect did you make to?
Well, of, of course, the first, the first consideration is a significant improvement to the driveway. You know, typically ten foot wide and now it is twenty foot. That was number one. We specify a stop sign where there is none today. And there is, uh, it's not detail on this plan, but there is a separate improvement plan that we, and again, this is specifically the turning radius here for fire trucks and emergency vehicles. So there's a specific driveway entry improvement plan. So that has all been addressed and significant improvements over existing conditions.
Yeah, I, I don't think that that work, the work of that driveway is meant for twenty six cars. I don't think the original design of the character of that lane and the houses around it want twenty six cars up and down and the properties on the side on Northern and Sterling. I don't think two houses that are fronting a driveway is going to add the right value to our property and that's, I, I think it's going to add more, more concern. So I, I, I definitely, we definitely have an issue with that. Uh, you talked about the.
Is, is there a question there?
Well, the question is safety. I, I think I'm raising concern about safety.
All right, and I will reiterate that in terms of safety, the twenty foot driveway is a significant improvement in terms of safety. The stop sign is a significant improvement in safety. And the reconstruction of the driveway entry with particular emphasis on turning radius for emergency of vehicles is a significant improvement.
Yeah, and then. Can I ask a question quickly about that? Because I believe at other, there's been other testimony about where, where widening streets or widening driveways actually, while it does create a nicer aesthetic and maybe more room, it actually creates the opportunity and the desire for people to speed more. And for their, I mean, the turning radius to go in and, and the rest of that is obviously a requirement, but would you or would you not agree that it has been testified to previously? Me, and I can't be sure to this application, but I know I brought up the number of cars and stuff, but that a widened area of passage actually creates a faster, I mean, you're not a traffic safety expert. I'm not asking you to say that, but wouldn't you agree that that does create the ability for people to go a little faster? We've had that testified to this board before.
I believe that there is a significant distinction between a twenty foot wide common driveway and over widening, say a county roadway, significant difference. I think what is important here is proper, proper emergency vehicle access. And, and I would add a place to push plowed snow. As that I think.
Where were you pushing the plowed snow? I'm sorry, which, to which direction to the?
Well, it, it either direction, but a, as a practical matter, if you're starting with twenty feet of pavement, um, it's going to be much easier to plow than a narrow ten foot driveway.
Well, you're not going to be putting the snow on top of the trees. And if you go down, down a little further to twenty oh one, you're not going to be putting it on their front porch. Which is what you have here. So I, I don't, I don't know where you're, you know.
I, I would, for notice, you notice these hemlocks are set back from the edge of pavement. Okay, I'm not going to get into how a gentleman who's snow plowing might plow his driveway, but there's accommodations here. That's why these hemlocks are set back from the edge of pavement. Okay, there is thirty feet of front lawn here. You know, if, if we keep this easement and that easement is now incorporates the overhead wires, we can certainly incorporate snow storage if, if we get direction tonight on this easement.
But one, one would argue, I guess I would ask, if you, if you don't need to dig it up, which was the original resolution, because that's where the utilities are going to come from. If you're not going to dig it up and you're going to saw cut it, which I have no idea what that really means entails. Um, and you take on, you take up more of the, the lawn and the grasses on the sides. I would say, don't, I would argue to say, don't expand it to twenty feet. Well, what, what, that was the whole intent of why, uh, you know, you were going to expand it was because of the utilities. Now we're not doing that. Um, so I, I would argue the reverse. Let me, let me move on. I know, I know we're going late here. There was a comment about the house up front twenty dot oh one. That house's foundation is stable and can be renovated. If anybody's familiar with the Prospect and Maple Historic Stone House, the walls were crumbling and they restored it. They're selling it for one point two million. There was a stone house in Fairlawn that was in ten times as worse shape as, as the house on the front that they have restored as well. So I would beg, I forget who asked the question about home inspections. This, that house can definitely survive. I've been in a lot of historic homes. So I just, I just wanted to mention that. My other question would be, in the original resolution, page eleven, there was, uh, because the utilities were going to be upgraded and used that the backup properties would benefit from new PVC piping. I think Chris recommended that and it was put into the resolution. So what happens to all of those upgrades now that we were promised in the resolution?
It's on the plan.
But if you're not going to, if you're not going to.
No, 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 let me, I'll, I'll show you on the plan.
If you're not ripping up the pavement.
We're, we're going to put it to the right, to the east of the existing pavement. That is, that is specified on the plan. Give me a moment.
So what's going to run underneath the driveway then? Not the gas and the water and sewage?
Your, your, I'm, I'm presuming you're, you're referring to your utilities or the new home or twenty oh two utilities?
Our, our utilities. So the, the first, yeah, the first, uh, the first resolu, the resolution last time. Because you were going to tear up the driveway to get to the utilities, gas and water. We were going to get benefited by that and Chris asked for PVC to be run all the way through as well and to be upgraded for our utility lines. So that's not going to happen now. Is that true?
No, no, the plan specified, I'm searching for it. There is a PVC conduit to be installed. Um, and I will show you on the plan that if you need that in the future for.
What do you say? That's, that's just, that's just to the street, at the street?
No, no, it's going to, it's. And pardon me, I, it's, it's hard to read sometimes on the screen, but there is.
Yeah.
The plans, the plans specify PVC conduit. And I will find it just. Here it is, right here. Three inch SDR thirty five PVC conduit for future water line. That, or if you will, okay, and that we would extend up to this point. We specific, and if it's there, if you ever need it. We did not have extended any further due to the thirty six inch oak tree because obviously if we trench there, that is to the detriment of that oak tree. But if you ever need a conduit for a, a two inch water line or what, that conduit is specified on the plans. It is not underneath. This is the existing pavement line, right? I'm tracing the existing pavement line. That conduit would go in before we widen the driveway. So that conduit is there in case someone needs it.
Okay. I, I don't know if Chris expected it to go all the way down or not. Um, that's fine. I noticed in our, our regulations, there is a, a request for you to provide the construction hours of operation.
Yeah, I expect this to be whatever is, is permitted by ordinance. Which I believe is eight to five, but I defer to Chris.
I'm sorry, what did Chris say? Seven to five?
Monday through Friday. Chapter two, two, two in the village code.
Okay. In the resolution, it says that the common driveway is unfettered ingress and egress cannot interfere or be obstructed. Given all of the construction that's going to go on and the widening, I, I don't, can you explain the plans on how the three houses in the back are going to be getting in and out? And emergency vehicles coming in during the construction?
All the construction activity will be outside and beyond the driveway, of, of course, except when it's widened. It's going to be no different than many, any other, uh, common driveway.
I don't, I don't know that we have a lot of major subdivisions with easements and common driveways. So I'm not, I haven't seen anything in our ordinances that kind of speak to that. Because again, we need to be getting in and out. And so it concerns me about the widening or trucks, you know, they, they, it, it always has to be free and clear. And if it's a private driveway, what is our protection and who are we going to call to get equipment off of the driveway?
The as a practical matter, you, you talk to the, the foreman of the construction crew. For example, if there's a, as a practical matter, when they're pouring the concrete for this foundation, they're going to be parking on the interior of the lot. Yes, there'll be a few minutes when that concrete truck drives down this driveway. That, that's, uh, that's normal and customary.
Okay, and, and there'll be notification of those events?
No, um, I would. We could make it, we can ask Joe, Joe, have you spoken with Joe, Joe Tasco at all?
I have.
Okay, so I would respectfully suggest continue, continue to speak with him. You will find he's very talkative, uh, and he'll certainly make you aware of, of construction schedules.
And so to the planning board, uh, what, what is our protection of that? Suppose Joe hits the lottery and leaves. Gets hit by the beer truck. I don't know, suddenly gets a great job out of high school graduation. What, what, I mean, because often we've called Ridgewood Police, now like it's a private driveway.
Dave, did you want to respond to Denise?
Again, these types, if you're asking me, yeah, I can, I can only say that certainly Mr. Tesco is going to try to work in as great a cooperation with the neighbors as he can. You know, there, there's no, there's no agenda here to hurt anyone or inconvenience anyone any more than has to be done. So, so that's, that's number one. And number two, you know, some of these. And number two, you know, some of these concerns or matters that relate to the property owners that share this driveway, not necessarily the planning board. So, again, um, you know, somewhat beyond the jurisdiction of the board, but that having been said, we'll, we're gonna try to cooperate the neighbors as great as possible during the construction process.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, thanks Denise. All right, is there anyone else from the public that wants to ask questions for T-Bore?
Uh, Rich, I have Mary Lou raised her hand again.
Okay.
Bring her in. All right.
Mary Lou, you're on mute.
She's back.
Well, I didn't use this before. Uh, Denise's question. If they're putting a conduit in for future use, but they can't continue it because of my oak tree, that doesn't make me feel comfortable because it's really not for future use unless my oak tree is killed. So is there a reason the conduit couldn't go on the other side of the driveway?
It could go on the other side of the driveway with some clear definitions to its use.
Well, I don't see any value it on being on the side it is now unless.
Or, or, or we extend this conduit to the other across, one, uh, right across. So if it's to be extended in the future, it'll be on the uh, west side of the driveway.
There you go.
We, we could, we could address that.
That would be much preferable. And one other thing, if the person who knows more about safety, you know, could clarify, if you have a very wide driveway and it has a stop sign on the end of it, that to me, as a non architect or whatever, would make it really look like a road. And encourage more people in there doing you things and all. Is, is, is the stop sign making it worse instead of better?
Is that the que, that's a question, I guess somebody.
Yeah. Yeah. It's a street, not a driveway. So is that gonna make it worse or is that gonna make it better from a safety viewpoint? I don't.
I believe the stop sign is a prudent measure.
So that's for people coming out of the driveway, people roaring into what they think is a road. A stop sign to me, in my head, would make it look like a road. And encourage.
This is, this can, I think this can be easily addressed by putting a private driveway sign on the backside of the stop sign signpost. Posted as a private driveway. And uh, people are advised.
And I'm not sure who it was that raises safety issue about the wider driveway and the speeding. But do they agree with this opinion?
That was me. You'd have to reiterate the opinion I'm, I'm, that was in question.
The.
Specifically.
How do you name driveways as there are roadways instead of making it safer and make it more dangerous? We already are talking about a driveway is widened almost a street width. And then if we put a stop sign on it too, is that not even more liable to encourage people to roar in and roar out thinking it's a street?
I, I personally, my personal, if you're asking my opinion, I, I, yes, I, I think I've been very clear about that since the beginning of any of this site, from this application's beginning all the way until now.
Okay.
I, I, I specifically have concerns about kids walking down that walking down that street. I, I have been very, very vocal about any safety issues I thought this could bring about.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I, I feel that way, but I thought maybe it was just me. Thank you.
Any further questions for T-Bore, Mary Lou?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, all right, thanks. Is there anyone else from the public that has questions for T-Bore?
I have Denise Lima.
Okay.
All right, bringing her back in. Nice, please unmute.
Hi, I think that was a mistake. I think I'll let everybody go home.
Thought it was a tennis match here.
But now that I'm on, I do agree with Mary Lou. Good night, everybody.
Question for Chris, Brutus Hauser. So Chris, is it appropriate when you're putting signs up to put, to sandwich the private road sign to the back of the stop sign because the stop sign is on one row, one side? So is that, is that okay to do that?
Uh, it's not the preferred method because one of the features of a stop sign is it's very, very distinct shape. If you put a, a backer sign on it of a different shape, it can obscure the fact that it is a stop sign. Um, I would prefer on the opposite at the entrance, a standard MUTCD compliance sign that says dead end. Um, I believe we have those at other private roads in the village. Uh, two examples would be the Commons at Ridgewood. And I believe Hopper Ridge condominium complex.
Right, okay. There, I mean, would that be overkill or impossible to add a children crossing um, sign in any, on it? It might be too many signs at that point. I know there's which sign to read.
We have a number of traffic uh, signs in the area. I believe there's a mid block crosswalk warning sign just to the west at North Parkway. Um, there may also be already signs along Glen Ave as it goes towards to, to, to Vell School and BF.
So I, I had another question because um, I just want to answer. On the current plan for twenty point oh two, when compared to the original proposal. T-Bore.
Yes.
Um, so could you just explain how on the original, it, it appears that it's a forty-five foot, forty-five feet from the property line to the back of the house? Is that what I'm seeing on the original?
On the original? Let me pull that up. Yes, forty-five feet.
And then on the new, it looks like it's now fifty point, fifty feet, eight inches to the cantilever. Is that what I'm seeing there?
Okay. Yes, it's a shallower house, yes.
Okay, and how deep is the cantilever?
I would, I would have to check the architecturals, but it looks to be uh, two or three feet.
So on, on the difference in the depth of the house, what was the um, plan and then the, the three bedroom home? What was the depth of that versus the four bedroom home?
Well, certainly uh, five point eight feet. The original house was five point eight feet deeper um, than the proposed home. Then it's, it's really the difference, the front yard sit, it is, it is a shallower home. And so you are picking up an extra five feet in the backyard.
Well, it's a shallower home, but obviously the, the way that the four bedrooms are put in there is because that, although it's shallow, it's carried, the, the depth is carried across. So that makes a big difference. Right, the bulk of the house. Okay, all right, that was my question. Okay, I'm good.
Hey, is there anyone from the public that has questions for T-Bore?
I am not showing any others.
Okay. I guess now would be a good break off time. David?
Yeah, that's fine, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate the board gave this a lot of time. Um, I would reiterate Mr. Litinich uh, question from earlier. I realize the board has not heard the entire case. I understand that. But if any board member were willing to share with us some thoughts about the separate easement that we're proposing and uh, the side loading nature of the garage uh, for lot twenty point oh two. We'd appreciate that. We understand that the board wants to see a composite plot plan showing both lots and one plan, which we can do. Uh, we have heard certainly concerns of several board members about the orientation of the lot on twenty point oh one and we'll take, it will take uh, uh, obviously give that due thought and consideration. So if, if, if there's anything the board can share with respect to the separate utility easement and the side loading garage, we'd like to have that. If not, we'll, we'll move ahead as best we can based upon what we've heard thus far.
All right, um, anyone from the board is free to, you know, make a comment if they want. This is non-binding. This is just to see if they can get some direction for just when they come back. Uh, does anyone have any thoughts or anything that they want to uh, share with David? Uh, it's non-binding. We're not in deliberation or anything. It's just giving some thoughts and maybe some direction on it.
Yeah, we, I, I'll be clear with Mr. Chairman. I'm glad you made that. Yeah, I, I'll be totally clear with that. Yes, we understand that any comments that are made do not necessarily express a board member's ultimate uh, decision or determination on the matter. We totally understand that. Uh, we're just trying to get a little direction here. We think what we've done makes a lot of sense. Um, but if, if, you know, there are concerns, we'd like to hear it. And if not, as I said, we'll, we'll make our own determination.
So the, the side facing side light loading garage didn't change and it didn't have any impact on trees or tree removal because it appears, I'm just trying to go back and forth between the side load in the original. That one again. Yeah, it's that one. It's here, all right. So did that impact? So that, so we, we're losing extra trees because of that side load, right? See that we're losing.
Yeah, you, I think you're losing a bunch of cedar trees.
Right, so that brings me, so in, in just terms of cedar trees and I'm not a green person, so I just want to that out there. I'm not a good tree person. But I, I see that there's a whole bunch of trees Xed out on one plan, but then those, it appears that, that Councilman Reynolds is exactly correct. It looks like because of the side load, we're losing a whole bunch more trees. And then all those trees that are being removed, the cedar and, and there's other trees. They're actually all being replaced. All these different trees are being replaced with hemlocks in a line. Is that what I'm seeing that, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, it, you know, it's a very different impact. So my question is, how many actual trees do we, additional trees do we lose as a result of the side loading garage as opposed to the original plan? Okay.
Actually, all those cedars uh, were to be eliminated on the original approved plan. And I will point out that the replacement uh, trees have been doubled. The.
They're all hemlocks, but they're all hemlocks, right?
And, and yes, but if, if, if the guidance is that a, a mix of conifers, in fact, I believe it's probably Norway spruce that have been delivered to the site already. Um, so uh, we could certainly uh, provide a, a mix of conifers. Uh, but I think there's actually a net gain in trees. The approved plan specified eighteen replacement trees, thirty-five are specified.
Is it possible to also, when you redo the plans, mix in some more like canopy shade trees as well? So it's not just the screening evergreens?
I think we need deciduous. I don't think we just need conifers. I think we need.
There's a lot of the canopies getting cut down.
Right, the can, it's, that's, I, thank you, Diane. That's exactly my point. When you put all these hemlocks that you, you're losing, you have all these conifers, but you have no deciduous trees. So you may not have, have to leaf blow or rake anything, but it is a canopy. It kind of, it, it's, it's something that's kind of important. And it, you know, it adds to.
We, we could strongly investigate, we, we can investigate that.
Yeah, I, I think that the hemlock thing is kind of like a, you know, it's, it's not a great way out. I mean, there's a whole life cycle, there's birds, there's people, you know, things that live there. So I think that you need mix. So, yeah, so if it doesn't change the impact on the trees, then for me, the side loading garage is preferable. I, I, I think I also might, yeah, okay, that's for me.
Can I just ask a question while you have this on the, on the screen? So on the left side on twenty point oh two, there's like a orange, it looks like a chain link. Is that, is there a fence currently there?
The neighbors do have fences. This is, it looks like an orange caterpillar.
Yeah.
Okay, that is a stone wall to protect these large canopy maples from grading. That is a specific, that's a tree well, but in this case a tree wall uh, to protect these trees along the property line.
And are all those maples gonna stay?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, and the, the two little uh, sheds, the dollhouses. A neighbor, I was, asked me when I was on site, yes, those two non-conforming sheds, dollhouses, whatever you may call them, are proposed to be removed. A neighbor had asked, I don't know if they're in attendance, that was a concern of theirs. Yes, they will be removed.
Okay, um, concerns with the garage, the two car garage, uh, it doesn't matter to me which way it faces. I don't think there's a probably easier to get in and out. You know, to back up and come out forward into a shared common driveway, which is better than having to back out into the shared driveway. So I'm inclined to say, you know, this, this proposal is probably better than the original.
Is anyone uh, for front uh, loading garage at all? I'm just trying to see if anyone's opposed to the side loading.
I think the side loading um, garage as a real, as a licensed Realtor would, it, you don't have to take as much away from the front of the house. For having it come out on the side as you, as um, as our friend Lorraine stated, gives more visibility to go out in, to back out into the street. It also during quiet time, children have oppo, have a place to play closer to the house if they want to play in the driveway than playing in the front uh, with a front loader.
Okay, how about uh, the orientation of the house uh, on East Glen? Does anyone like the side of the house facing or do they want the front door facing uh, East Glen?
Definitely with front door facing East Glen.
I like the front door facing East Glen.
That's my preference. Anyone? So, does anyone want a side door?
To me, am I, to me, it, it, oh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. Whoop, you muted.
To me, it really depends on
Go ahead.
the architectural design of the house. Because if the garage is there and they put it in sideways, they literally can put a really nice porch on that front side face in the street which would not take away from the um, from the beauty of the home. So it really depends on what they present architecturally in their design as far as whether it's a side or a sideways or how they put the house in the lot. They may end up getting sideways or how they put the house in the lot. They may end up getting more use out of the house going sideways. That's why they want to do it that way.
All right, well, what you're getting at is like a faux front that makes it look like.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That doesn't work. Yeah. Other people have tried it and failed.
I'm gonna say two things. My preference is to adhere to the representation that the original structure was remaining to do everything. And I don't, somebody can say that it deteriorated. I'll tell you anything, any house and, and Denise Lima and I know I'm quite familiar with the house she's talking about because we worked tirelessly to make sure that it wasn't raised. Any house can be preserved, any house can be restored. Is this any house, you know, in the worst condition? So it's my position that the adherence should be to the representation that it was going to be maintained and restored and preserved. And in, in the absence of that, which is my absolute preference, then I, I really dislike the side-facing structure. So it should be facing the orientation to the roadway. But really, there's an obligation here, I believe, to, to preserve that original structure.
Okay, yeah, I think, Dave, if you can address that next time, because you know, it does look like they have language that the existing house is gonna stay. And then even if you go to the conditions that one and eight, it kind of references representations and findings of facts. So just so we can clear the air on that point. But how about, does anyone have any feelings regarding a separate utility easement?
I'm a little concerned with that. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I'm a little concerned with that because I know structurally and it would be easier to put in the new line. I don't know if anybody can see me, but but it would be easier to put in the new line, which would widen the road. But however
Road is not being widened for the utility easement. The utility easement is
All right, okay, hold on, Mr. T-Bore. Please be polite to me because I don't, I don't talk harsh to you. How are you gonna cover this up once you dig it up and put the new line in?
It's, it's gonna be lawn area.
Okay, so it's just gonna be dirt?
Well, lawn, not just dirt, lawn.
Okay, well, I was gonna say that dirt. Okay, so why'd you move the picture? Because everybody's looking at it.
I'm focusing, this is, this is, this is the utility easement area.
Where?
Right here. Where my cursor is, 10, from 10 feet beyond the driveway.
Funny, I can't see it though. Maybe because I have
The blue line.
I'm sorry. All right, I see it now.
Is it, is it 10-foot wide utility easement? It's gonna be, and that's this is Lima's right. That's exactly where the overhead transmission lines are. Makes all the sense in the world. A trench would be excavated, utilities installed, backfilled, and landscaped with lawn.
And they could go ahead, whoever was talking.
Well, I was gonna say, I mean, there were a lot of trees along that property, a lot of trees with canopies along that line, which you could not plant then because the roots would grow into
Okay, the, there's no, with, with modern PVC pipe, which only has a joint every 20 feet, there is no problem with root intrusion, but any, any, under any circumstance, with those overhead wires, you would not want to put deciduous tall trees here because like the trees that were cut down, they are going to ultimately interfere with these overhead wires. So certainly there's, you know, there's a landscaping plan such as these hemlocks. We understand that we should be providing a mix of species for the, for the conifers and adding some deciduous trees. We understand that. But the worst place to put those deciduous trees are in this proposed utility easement because of the overhead wires. Plenty other, you know, plenty other, this is a large lot, 20, 24,000, almost 25,000 square foot lot. There's plenty of other places to put trees.
Okay, because I have another question for you. So you're saying overhead wires, are the wires running along the driveway?
They are parallel to the driveway, yes.
Huh?
The, the overhead wires are parallel to the driveway. That, this is, I'll point to my cursor here. It, O, O, O-H-W is abbreviation for overhead wire. There is a utility pole here. And
Excuse me.
And a utility pole somewhere in this area, but that's all on the plan.
So the utility pole is on the, is on the inside of the house, towards the house. New utility poles, is that correct?
No, those are existing utility poles. So you pull right here.
All right.
Did anyone have any comments on the separate utilities meant? I mean, I'm okay with it. It just burdens their property and it makes it easier access, I guess.
I think it's better because this way if there's a problem, you're not disturbing the other utilities. And they go to the, the far back houses.
Yep.
Yeah, I have no objection to it.
Okay, all right.
Am I permitted to ask an additional question?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. There's been comments that there would be a preference for the front door of the home on lot 20.01 to face the street. Now, first question is, can, is that is that a second front door, question number one, or are you referring to rotating the house, which would be a second driveway? Are you, are you moving in the direction of that we should consider rotating this house? A second driveway through the stone wall, there's a stone wall along the front, which is part of the streetscape, and a second driveway cut to East Glen Ave? Is that what you, is that what you're asking us to consider?
We're saying, we're consider the streetscape, make it tasteful and blend with the other houses. That's for an architect to determine how it's gonna look. But, you know, it's either if it's gonna be a faux front and look beautiful and tasteful and blend in, that's, you know, design decision.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reiterate the concern of adhering to the representations that were made in the resolution in the original approval that the original house should be restored and would be maintained. So in my opinion is, I'm, I'm really not interested in a faux front at the front of the house. If, if that's the direction we're going, which I really don't think it should be. But the, the front door of the house should be facing the road that it's on, the street that it's on. And there's no curb cut presently to, no, no additional curb cut presently for 315. It's currently accessing the same access easement. So I don't see why that's even a conversation because it's still doable either way. But the original house, I think that there's a real obligation here to adhere to maintaining that original structure.
Yeah, I would, I would think if you can't, for some reason, you have to knock that house down because it's completely destroyed. You should build one that's close to what's there.
Yeah, but again, I think every house can be restored. I don't think that there's, you know, if you wanted, if, you know, it can be saved. There would no realistic reason why it couldn't be. And that was the representation that was made.
All right. All right, Dave.
Yeah, I, well, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm sorry, but I do need to be heard for a moment, please. I have had occasion to speak with my client on several occasions since we last spoke. Mr. Tasko has made it very clear to me that he would like the board to deliberate and vote on the matter this evening. I'd be prepared to make a short summation and he's prepared to have the board vote this evening. I don't know if the board can accommodate that. I realize it's late. I realize the board's been here for a number of hours. I understand that. But that, that's, that's my client's position. I've discussed it with him at several occasions during the past 10 minutes or so, and that's clearly my, my instruction here to the board. So I'm gonna ask if the board can give us another short period of time. I'll make a brief summation. We'd like the board to vote and deliberate and vote this evening on this matter.
So I'm gonna ask for them, the item to be carried because, to continue it, because we've asked for additional material. So we understand how this will be placed and we need to understand the, the, you know, what's going to happen with the original house. So I think we have some missing information and I'm not comfortable at all voting right now.
I don't think we're in any position to deliberate tonight at all, so not in favor.
Okay, yeah, I agree with that. Anyone else have comment from the board?
I agree. We're not ready to vote.
All right, Dave, we're, we're gonna just carry it to the next meeting.
I understand. That's, that's the board's right. And I, I understand that decision, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
That would be, what is it, June? First, no, June 1st?
June 1.
There we go, okay. All right, I understand.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna carry this application to June 1 without further notice and without prejudice to the board. Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board, for your, for your time this evening, and we will see you in two weeks.
Okay, all right, thanks, David.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yep. All right, our next item on the agenda, discussion regarding proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 190 of the Village Code to modify allowed fence heights for residential uses. Is this, is Mary Ann handling this one or?
Um, um, yes. And given the time, I mean, I don't know if we really need to discuss today. I have discussed it with some other other employees and other professionals in the village. And I've gotten some feedback, so I am prepared to make some adjustments to this and I can reissue it and we can talk about it at the next meeting and it'll give you a little bit more if you want to do it that way.
All right, yeah, we can do that. We'll carry it to June 1 then.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, because there were some interpretations where people read through it and they weren't exactly clear, so I can make those adjustments and then next time, hopefully it, it will resolve everything except anything that the board members find.
Okay, sure.
Okay, I think we have to get this one right.
Yeah.
Good opportunity.
All right, our next item will be for the adoption of minutes of May 4, 2021. All that were present are able to vote on this. Does anyone have any revisions or anything, or does someone want to make a motion on it?
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes.
I'll second it.
Is that Diane?
Yep.
Okay. All right, Mary Newtonson?
Yes.
Chief in Gore?
Yes.
Councilman Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Joe?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Bartow?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Mr. Lebarsky?
Yes.
And minutes of May 4 are approved. Do we have any other business, anyone?
Um, I have a question. I just have one question about the next meeting. Are we going to have it Zoom or did you want, are we going to have it in, in person?
So I, I think we should do Zoom if it's June 1 and work toward mid. And also on our next agenda, can we add closed session? I think it has a closed session. I, it's a review of a policy, policy review. Is that okay to go on closed sessions? Be well enforced. Are you okay with that?
Yes, yeah, I think you, I think it can be.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, I'll, you know what, I'll look into it and make sure, but I'm pretty sure we can.
Okay, good. I'll, I'll send you all the documents so you know what it is.
Great, appreciate it.
Hey, any further business, anybody? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, do second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, thank you, everyone. A little late night here, but thanks for hanging in there.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, everyone. Thanks, thanks Dylan.
Thanks Dylan, take care, Jane.